Okay, well, great. And then I had to keep reminding myself, you know, we're going to do this one.
No.
I'm honestly a mystery. No, 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 no. I get to decide. No, we're not going in the basement.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome in. We're going to get started here in just a moment. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We do have a special meeting tonight, so I will call to order the August 22nd, 2022 special meeting. Following the special meeting, we will adjourn to our workshop. So if you'd like to stick around for that, that will be happening immediately after our one item for our special meeting. So we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Clerk Beck, can we get a roll call, please?
Counselor Barnes.
He'll be arriving 10 minutes late.
Counselor Briggs.
Yes, here.
Mayor Monget.
Here.
Counselor Madrona.
Here.
Counselor Sampson.
Here.
Counselor Walton.
Hello.
Hello, and Mayor Proton Wall.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Reaporn.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we have public input tonight. If you'd like to speak for public input, you'll have five minutes to speak. You can grab a yellow form just like this through those glass doors back there and pass it over to Clerk Beck here, and we'll give you your chance to speak. We also have an opportunity to speak online over the phone as well, in which case you can call in. So we will begin with Robert Mailer. You'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor City. So I appreciate once again you giving me time to speak to you tonight. Robert Mailer, 201 East Lucerne Drive. I'm kind of out of sorts here because I'm usually over there. If you ever want a new idea, read an old book. Marcus Aurelius said, "If it's not right, don't do it. If it's not true, don't say it." So your first, when I was reading through the revised bill, just a couple of points I want to call out. "Whereas the presence of firearms at buildings and governments and polling places on and on poses a severe threat to the First Amendment," in my opinion, we wouldn't have a constitution if it wasn't for citizens who are armed. So saying it opposed it, you know, it's against the First Amendment is a little bit, in my opinion, again, a stretch. Also, it said it's necessary for the city to prohibit open or concealed carry firearms in certain designated public places in order to protect the public, the safety of residents, visitors, and employers of city council. As I showed before in the data I showed you, there's no data that backs that up. So again, that's opinion. Also, in terms of the provision about who it doesn't apply to, CRS 1812-105.6 of the Colorado Revised Statute talks about retired law enforcement officers not being subject to these laws. This ordinance does not mention retired law enforcement officers. It mentions law enforcement officers, but not retired. I believe that's an oversight in this bill. Also, it mentions that having a valid concealed carry permit is not negate this. Just a couple of things I want to point out, and I put in the appendix the entire part that talks about all the things that a concealed carry permit holder has to go through in order to get a concealed carry permit, and it's pretty onerous. Also, in CRS 1812-114, Colorado Revised Statute, talks about safe storage of a firearm. Putting a firearm in a locked vehicle is a violation of that ordinance. So if somebody, for example, wanted to come to city council and speak with you, and they can't carry their concealed permit, if they put it in their car and lock the car, they are in violation of that law. So it seems to me you're kind of encouraging a violation of law. Also, I mentioned before crime data on one of my last slides. True that the chance of a crime occurring in Lafayette, of a violent crime occurring in Lafayette, is fairly low. It's not zero. Actually, if anybody read the Daily Camera today, you would see a perfect example of this because Longmont just arrested a Lafayette citizen for shooting and killing somebody in Longmont. That article goes on to say that they've already heard "rumblings" of retribution. That puts our city right in the crosshairs. And I'm going to close it again with my favorite quote, and that's from Suzanne Hupp again, who was a survivor of the Luby shooting. She said, "The only thing that gun laws did that day was to prevent me and a number of other people in that restaurant from being able to protect ourselves and others." If city council was truly worried about protecting the city buildings, things like that, they would do like Boulder County does and have armed guards and a metal detector to get into the building. All these laws do is provide us the capability, or provide you the capability, of punishing somebody after they've committed the crime. It does not protect anybody. With that being said, I'd like to thank you very much for your consideration and for listening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so I don't have any more yellow slips. Is there anyone in person tonight that would like to speak? All right, and I'm looking online as well, and I do not see any callers. But we do have one public comment that is being reflected in the minutes as well that members of the public and members of council can view in the meeting packet.
Mayor?
Yes.
It might not be clear when you're calling in how to raise your hand.
We don't have any callers.
Oh, I understand now. Period.
Yeah, they don't care. Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, so that being said, we will close public input. Okay, and we are on to special business for tonight. Item A, first reading of Ordinance Number 31, Series 2022, amending Section 75-263.5 of the Lafayette Court of Ordinances prohibiting the possession of firearms in city buildings and other sensitive public places. And I'm turning it over to our city attorney. There he goes.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight at your special meeting, we will be presenting this ordinance, Number 31, which will, as you said, amend a specific section that was recently enacted. That's Section 75-263.5 of the code regarding the possession of firearms in city buildings and other sensitive public places. Okay, I'm hoping this clicker will work. There we go. Okay, so to give council a little bit of background as to why we are here with this ordinance this evening, you will recall that on June 21st, you adopted Ordinance Number 23, which enacted this new code section that we'll be looking at tonight, and that addressed the possession of firearms in buildings and areas under the control of the city and prohibited either the open or concealed carry of firearms in the places listed in that ordinance. On June 23rd, just two days later, the United States Supreme Court issued an opinion in New York State Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin that provided some additional guidance that's relevant to the new Section 75-263.5, particularly regarding sensitive places where firearms may constitutionally be prohibited. And some examples that the Supreme Court gave in that opinion are schools, government buildings, legislative assemblies, polling places, courthouses, and places that are analogous to those or which there is a historical tradition of prohibiting firearms around the time that the Second Amendment or Fourteenth Amendments were adopted. So a brief overview of what the ordinance in front of you tonight will do. Specifically, it will amend Code Section 75-263.5 to refine the types of sensitive places where firearms may be prohibited in light of this additional guidance that we received through the Bruin opinion. It will also exclude private property within the 500-foot polling place buffer that is currently in the ordinance. Because of the length of that buffer, we felt it was important to address any private property that might be in that buffer. And then finally, it will clarify that private security guards carrying a firearm must be on duty for the exemption in the ordinance to apply. That's merely a technical item that we wanted to address after the fact because it didn't specify the on-duty piece. So now I'm going to cover the four areas that are revised in this ordinance in Section 75-263.5. So the first, and this was discussed a bit at your June 21st meeting. The ordinance will add an exception for city rights-of-way from the general prohibition on firearms on city property. And so right now, that subsection A1 currently reads that firearms are prohibited, whether in an open or concealed manner, whether being carried in an open or concealed manner on any real property owned or operated by the city. And again, you might recall on June 21st that a question came up as to whether that would include city-owned public rights-of-way, and at the time, I advised council that it was broad enough to include those. But at the time, prior to Bruin, we didn't have explicit authority saying that the city But at the time, prior to Bruin, we didn't have explicit authority saying that the city could not do that. Now, in the Bruin decision that came out two days later, the Supreme Court pretty flatly rejected the state of New York's attempt to characterize all public places of public congregation, or all places of public congregation that are not isolated from law enforcement as sensitive places. And they held that was just too broad to fall within the categories of the types of constitutionally recognized sensitive places where firearms may be prohibited. So we've addressed that by accepting city-owned public rights-of-way. And just as a side note, I wanted to mention to council that's consistent with what other municipalities in the area have done, who've recently passed ordinances as well. And the second thing that the ordinance does is it defines specifically what city rights-of-way means for purposes of this exception. The code currently contains a definition of city rights-of-way in Chapter 105 that has to do with streets generally, but that definition would be far too broad for purposes of this particular section. So we have refined a definition to be specific to this exception, or to this ordinance, to mean specifically all streets, roadways, sidewalks, alleys, dedicated trails, and all other areas reserved for use by the public as a matter of right for the purpose of vehicular or pedestrian travel. The way that that's more specific than our definition in Chapter 105 is it doesn't include broad categories of property like easements, like utility easements or future right-of-way that has not been actually built and is being used, even though it's been dedicated. We wanted to be specific that this applies to right-of-way in place and to be in place in the future, but that's actually being used for vehicular or pedestrian travel. The third thing that the ordinance does is it refines places where firearms are prohibited in subsection A, which is the subsection of the ordinance that defines the types of city property where possession of a firearm are prohibited. So those places will still include public parks and playgrounds that are owned, operated, or managed by the city. That's to also clarify that it won't be private parks. If the city is not managing or maintaining private parks, we would not have jurisdiction to regulate whether firearms are allowed there. Firearms will still be prohibited at the city's recreation center, community center, golf course, clubhouse, or aquatic center. And that would include plurals of those. So if we had more than one of any of those types of places, firearms would still be prohibited in any of those facilities, on the indoor and outdoor premises. Third, we will still prohibit firearms within 500 feet of a polling place on Election Day or in any place officially designated for ballot counting, for as long as that ballot counting is occurring. But as I mentioned earlier, we did add an exception for private property that might be within that 500-foot buffer. And for reference, and Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that 500 feet is more than a city block, and so we are talking about a pretty significant buffer. So to the extent there might be private property where someone can lawfully possess their own firearm, we would exclude that from this ordinance here. And then finally, this ordinance clarifies the exemption for private security guards, as I mentioned earlier. For a guard to be exempt on one of the types of properties included in the ordinance, they must be acting in the course and scope of their duties to fall within that exemption and to be able to carry a firearm. So that describes what the ordinance does. I also wanted to bring a staff-proposed amendment to the ordinance for your consideration tonight. And you actually heard this mentioned in public comment. We would recommend that council add a new exemption to the ordinance for qualified retired law enforcement officers under this federal statute, 18 U.S.C. Section 926C. This would, just because of the way that the statute is defined, this would include any exemptions under state law as well. But we do recommend that council consider this exemption. I wanted to provide a little bit of background about why, or at least for council to consider whether this exemption would be justified. So the statute that we're referring to here allows retired law enforcement officers to carry a concealed firearm, not openly concealed, subject to several stringent requirements. And these are set out in 18 U.S.C. 926C. So first, and these are not all of them, these are just some I wanted to highlight. There are more. But for purposes of what I thought the public and council should know tonight, the retired law enforcement officer must have retired in good standing from the law enforcement agency. They must have at least 10 years of service as a law enforcement officer. There is an exception for an officer who retires in good standing but due to disability that prevents them from continuing to work. And then, third, they must requalify annually under firearms training standards for active law enforcement officers. I felt like that was significant to point out. There is a every 12-month requirement that someone who would qualify under this must go into, for example, our local police department and requalify under those firearms training standards. So just be aware that that is, it's not a one-and-done deal. They need to renew this qualification every year. And then finally, among other requirements in the statute, anybody who qualifies under this exception, if council adds it, must carry photo identification that states they've qualified for this exemption. So the statute's very specific about how you qualify for the photo identification and that you have to carry it. So there would be no doubt, if there were some reason to determine whether somebody qualified under this exemption in our city, we would be able to determine that because they're carrying the required photo identification. So again, this is being proposed by staff, and we do recommend council consider and consider amending the ordinance tonight. If you are interested in amending the ordinance, this is what the exemption would read. It would be a new paragraph seven to the exemptions listed in subsection D of current Section 75-263.5, which would read as follows. A qualified retired law enforcement officer carrying identification required under federal So here's some recommended motions. I do recommend council at least start with a main motion of approving the ordinance itself, and then, so that you guys can discuss whether you're interested in the amendment, I would recommend a separate motion for considering the amendment. And that is the end of my presentation. Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions from councilors.
All right. Thank you so much for putting that presentation together. So yeah, I guess we'll turn it over to council for clarifying questions or comments. Go ahead, Counsel Walton.
I was wondering when the second reading would be on our agenda.
For this?
Yes, if this passed tonight, and would the second reading be?
I would assume at our next meeting.
I do check the charter. We would be fine to bring this back at the next meeting on second reading, at next regular meeting, I should say, on September 6th.
So since we are in a situation where we're under a special meeting without much notice to the public, I was wondering if maybe tonight we take minimal action in that we perhaps pass on first reading, or, you know, maybe discuss if this is supported, and then do a deeper discussion and perhaps any amendments at second reading. That's a little different than, you know, we usually do a broader discussion on first reading, but I'm just wondering if maybe that would be an opportunity to have a little more notice and more of a regular council meeting for our discussion.
Okay. So you'd still be interested in discussing this matter tonight and voting on it for first reading?
Yes.
And then maybe through the discussions, if other amendments are proposed, then at second reading, we discuss those additional amendments?
Yeah, I guess just do a broader discussion so that the public could be, you know, if there's more public input, or if, just so that we can have our discussion at a more regularly scheduled time.
Okay. I mean, I think that's something where we can see how the conversation goes tonight and see if it's, how, what we end up going with before we determine what's going to be discussed at the second reading. You know, I just want to get a better understanding of how we all feel first on this and then determine next steps after that, like just process-wise, if it'll be clear. Okay, I'm open to, I'm open to how others feel. In regards to this discussion, the presentation for tonight, though, in terms of the recommendation and the proposed amendment, do we have questions or comments from council? Go ahead, Counsel Barnes.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to apologize for not being here for the beginning of it. And I was going to say, has anything changed since 3:30? It looks like something did.
Counselor Barnes, it might help to see.
Email sent up.
The slide. So I went through the, just real quick, we did add the exception for rights-of-way, defined rights-of-way. And then I went through the types of places where firearms will still be prohibited if you adopted this ordinance. So, and then the final item was just clarifying a security guard exemption.
Okay. No, let's, no.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
All right. Further, any further thoughts? Come on, table. Otherwise, we're gonna, you know, we can take a recommendation. At least, I guess, for myself, can you go back to the original slide, the very first one?
So which one, Mayor?
The first slide. Is that it?
Overview or the background?
The overview. Yeah. Okay. Because I'm just clarifying the differences between what's existing, and if things were to change, what would be the key differences. And then there's a slide with the number three at the very beginning, I think it's towards the end. Can you go to that slide, too? Number three. There we go. Yep. So, public parks, playgrounds, those are still, would still prohibit.
Those, yeah, those would still be places where firearms would be prohibited. And, you know, public park and playground, there is some, there is evidence of similar regulations and the historical tradition around the time of the Fourteenth and Second Amendments, when those were adopted, which is how the Supreme Court directed courts and governments to determine whether a place is sufficiently analogous to one of the other sensitive places they've outlined. And so those are still included.
Okay, thank you.
Although that's subject to council's consideration.
Okay, can you put the motion language back on? Counsel Walton?
I'm happy to make a motion.
All right.
I move to approve on first reading ordinance number 31, Series 2022, amending Section 75-263.5 of the code prohibiting the possession of firearms in city buildings and other sensitive public places.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And procedurally, city attorney, would you suggest we proceed with the vote now and then bring forward the amendment afterwards, or attach the amendment now before vote?
So you could amend it on first reading, or you could wait until second reading to make any amendments to the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's entirely up to council.
Okay.
So just to get clarification, then, Counsel Walton, were you saying that you wanted to wait on this amendment then until the second reading?
That's what I, yeah.
That was your proposal?
Yeah, and then we can have a conversation at a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Would any further discussion? Okay, if not, can we do a roll call vote, just in case? Thank you.
Counsel Walton?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wong?
Yes.
Counsel Barnes?
Yes.
Counsel Briggs?
Yes.
Mayor Monget?
Yes.
Counsel Madrona?
Yes.
Counsel Sampson?
Yes.
Motion passed, as seen as.
Right. Okay, so then it looks like we have direction to bring back forth the amendment for second reading?
Absolutely. And Mayor, we will make sure that this goes on the regular business agenda.
On September 6th.
On September 6th, and we will update the memo to include this information for anyone who might be checking out the packet for that meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Great. Thanks, everyone. All right.
So wait a minute. We can't make a motion for the second one?
You can if you want.
Okay, I move to amend ordinance number 31, Series 2022, on first reading to add a new paragraph D7 to Section 75-263.5 to read as follows. A qualified retired law enforcement officer carrying identification required under 18 U.S.C. 926C.
Counselor Sampson, because the main motion was already voted on, would you be willing to revise your motion to simply state that you move to amend the ordinance as passed on first reading?
Yes.
Only change.
I move to amend the ordinance 31, Series 2022, as amended on first reading.
As? Passed on first.
As passed on first reading.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we do have a second. And in terms of discussion, and this will be a point of clarification for our city attorney, if this motion were to fail at our second reading, would we would still have the opportunity to vote on this proposed amendment at our second reading?
Absolutely. This or any other proposed amendment council wants to consider.
Great. Okay, well, we do have a motion on the table and a second for the proposed amendment to pass tonight, and let's go ahead and do another roll call vote, please.
Can I just do one clarification? Because my understanding is that we can still discuss, I mean, when we take the motion at the next meeting, it's a second reading, we still have discussion.
Absolutely.
Per Roberts' Rules of Order.
Right.
Right. I believe the purpose was to bring our constituents along with us instead of throwing this in last second and giving them an opportunity to read over things and look over and give their own thoughts if they so choose.
Sure. I'm just seeing this proposed amendment as being in alignment with the state law. And as a law-abiding citizen, I would prefer to be in alignment with the state law. And I do believe we have time for people to bring, come and discuss and come up and talk.
So for me, I.
No, go ahead, please.
So for me, I did not have an opportunity to read my emails today before this meeting, so I'm just seeing this in the supporting documents that were provided by city attorney. So I just, I feel like between that, wanting to get some more information on this particular amendment, and in order to be on record with a vote, I'd rather not take a vote tonight on that. And so I would rather have the opportunity to discuss it, the amendment, at second reading.
I value your opinion and your desire to do that. I just felt from a matter of meeting protocol, since it's presented to us, we should probably at least bring it up, and those that felt like they didn't have enough time could vote it down, and then we could bring it up again.
Yeah, I guess they'd rather not, like, be on the record on any specific vote since it's more about collecting some more information. So I was, you know, I guess I would ask, you know, are you, would you be willing to rescind your motion tonight and continue that conversation and make that motion again at second reading?
No, because I won't be here on September 6th.
Okay. So we have, it's like a, it's more of a procedural thing, I see.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying, is from a procedural. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, for the sake, I'll just say that I will be voting no tonight, just for the sake of letting our community have time to digest and.
Or another, if we want to be procedural, I move to table this item until September sixth for second reading.
Second.
Okay, so, we do have a, yeah, so, I hear what you're saying. Let's, first, let's vote on the original motion that's been proposed by Counselor Sampson and seconded by Mayor Pertham Wong for the.
I think you have to vote on them.
Yeah, so, procedurally, this is where we get into the real fine points of parlaying your procedure. So, we do have to address Counselor Walton's motion. Unfortunately, Mayor, just due to our procedural, we have to do that. So, there is a second, however, and I'm trying, Counselor Walton, I'm only saying unfortunately cause I'm sitting here trying to determine if we should say continue versus table, that's it.
Oh.
So, I think that, uh, I would say that I would recommend you do a motion to continue, or that it be a motion to continue, simply the question on whether to amend the ordinance until the next meeting.
So, I move to continue the motion for the amendment until September sixth meeting.
Second.
So, just some clarification for me. So, this proposed amendment is simply bringing the ordinance into line with state law, correct?
It would be federal law, but it's also consistent with state law. And I will, I looked at the statutes after Mr. Mayor spoke, and I have seen that statute before, but the, it doesn't quite, the one that I'm familiar with doesn't quite say things exactly how it was represented there. I do, so I can double-check that for counsel. I can come back and make sure that we are not causing any kind of interpretation or con, you know, issue against state law, but I am familiar with this federal statute. And that is what I understand our police department to be familiar with in dealing with these, dealing with these permits or these qualified retired law enforcement officers. And so, this is how I've recommended amending it. Now, I, if counsel wants to wait until the next meeting to see if we need to tweak it to address state law more specifically, we can. But again, what I heard tonight is not consistent with the statute I'm familiar with, but I will read the entire concealed carry statute again and make sure that we haven't missed anything under state law. I'm also not concerned that if we don't pass this amendment tonight, that there's some kind of legal infirmity in our ordinance. This is primarily a technical matter and a recommended amendment from our staff that would at least clarify or make it very explicit that individuals qualified under the statute are not gonna run afoul of our ordinance if they go into the police department for their recertification for their firearms training. So, we're just trying to address that.
Okay, so we can proceed with the, the motion to continue the conversation to our, for the amendment to our September sixth meeting, which was seconded as well? And if, is there any further discussion or points of clarification? It's getting a little, you know, it's getting a little bit confusing, but we can proceed with the vote if not. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pertham Wong?
No.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
Counselor Bruce?
Yes.
Mayor Maung Gett?
Yes.
Counselor Madrono?
No.
Counselor Sampson? Counselor Walton?
Yes.
That motion passes five to two with Counselor Madrono and Mayor Pertham Wong.
Great.
All right. So, Mayor, just for the sake of procedure, I think, I believe where that leaves us is when we come back on September sixth, the, we will have to deal with the proposed, the motion to amend first. And then, and depending on how it is with that motion, then we will move on to whether to adopt the ordinance on second reading. So, it is a little, we are adding a procedural step.
Just clarification, then, because a motion was made prior to the continuance, that motion still stands, cause we have not disclosed of that yet.
Right, to correct. Correct. Number ten. So, we will need to disclose of that.
Okay.
What was that, Mayor?
No, no, the next meeting. That's what she's saying, not particularly that first, because we, because the motion that Counselor Walton approved to continue superseded the.
You're simply continuing the discussion and vote on that motion until that meeting. Now, even if that motion were to hypothetically fail at the next meeting, somebody could still make the motion again after the ordinance is introduced for second reading, so.
So, you just had to have good memories?
Yes.
We watched the meeting before. Okay, sounds good. Then I'll wrap up our conversation then.
Yes.
Out for special business. All right. Great. So, I will adjourn the City Council's special meeting, and we will open up the City Council workshop for twenty-twenty-two. And we have a couple items to discuss tonight, including our budget, as well as the mental health and human services tax distribution. And just as a reminder, while we transition a little bit for the rest of the council, we do have another meeting sooner than expected, a week from today, correct? And this would be a workshop with the Planning Commission to discuss the transportation plan.
Yes.
So, just mark your calendars for five-thirty, a week from today. So, it's four meetings in a row, which we're not really used to, but just wanted to make sure people put that on their calendars.
No, no, not you. It hasn't been taken down before.
No, you done?
That would be me eating technology attachments, like.
That was still active, so when that's active, when you pull another one up, then it just, it doesn't.
Yeah. It's cause the amendment, the motion, it will continue. I got lost.
I actually followed on. I was surprised. I actually, like, was. I want that one. It's cause I was slow. I was so fast.
Jack.
No, you didn't.
I was surprised. I was more so anticipating more discussion about the, the ordinance, or just not the amendment, the actual ordinance.
I should work. I was just like.
Hopefully it works during the meeting.
I just, to me, I was just like, whatever, if that's what you're doing, fine. And I, and I gave.
I know you.
Yeah, I was like, just trying to, just trying to accommodate for others. Personally, vote on it tonight. It's not a big deal. That's what I'm sure you all didn't know, is cause you were just like, let's just vote for it now. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So, let's, um, everyone just got up and left, okay? It's like, nah, it's, uh, hey, let's get started in a minute, guys. Just turn around, I don't know what's going on. Yeah, I mean, but we got, we got a couple items, you know.
When's your birthday?
Is it your birthday?
Tomorrow. But we had a barbecue at my mom's house, and we had way too much cake. It's Jeff Riker's birthday, my birthday, and Susan Berger's birthday, and then Miss Lynette's on Thursday.
Yeah, mine, mine was last week.
Yeah.
Maybe like two weeks ago. Wait, what's today? Yeah.
Thanks. That's a Leo Virgo.
Yeah, seriously.
When you get some elected officials, roundhouse of Leo.
They're, they're assessing Robert's Rules of Order.
Yeah, they are. I mean, okay, I don't, sorry. It just seemed that a lot of that was unnecessary. Am I still on camera? I don't know.
I sent you a Microsoft email from our Microsoft with.
Oh, that's okay.
It captured everything, and I'm sure as soon as it gets back up again, every email that I compose is gonna start flooding. Cause we had to come in through the SI portal, cause it was jacked up.
It works.
Gave you some timeframes, which are.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was just gonna send you, I should just send you some.
Have since passed. Did you get some of them?
Did you send me some, or should I send you some?
I sent you some, they're stuck in the old system.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can send you some.
Okay, cool.
Well, honestly, anytime on Friday.
Yeah.
I have a good class on Friday.
Do you have five other days? Plan's out, huh?
Yeah.
All right, welcome back, everyone. We have our regularly scheduled workshop, and our first item will be an introduction to our budget. So, I'll turn that over to our City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Maung Gett, members of City Council. We're pleased to introduce this item to you this evening. And you can regard this more as a conversation. The budget process is one that starts early in the year and one that we put considerable work into. So, when you think about budget, and a lot of people think about budget, they think about numbers. And a lot of numbers can be scary and not fun, or maybe not even interesting, but the paradigm shift that I think is really important, and what's really cool about budget, it's about enacting ideas. And it's about enacting programs, and it's about enacting things that have an impact in people's lives. It's building things, it's things that are tangible. So, as we work through the budget process, you will see numbers, but we really like to start with ideas, and then we move from, from that particular assumption. So, this evening, we're gonna touch on the budget structure and the elements that we have in our budget. What does it take? What's the development process of when we actually put the budget together? What, what goes into that before it comes to City Council? Importantly, we pay very close attention to revenue, dollars coming in, and we have several different sources where dollars come into the city, and we watch that very closely. And we track that based upon national, state, and local trends. And then the other side of the coin is expenditure. So, that's where we spend the money in order to provide the programs and to provide the services to our residents. And then one thing that you'll consistently hear that we talk about are themes and priorities. And that goes toward many things that we hear about, responses from the community survey, discussions that we have throughout the year when we are talking to counsel about a variety of things. When I'm talking to you, having our one-on-ones, sometimes I, when I hear things, sometimes I hear particular themes that come up that I think are important enough that get elevated during, during the budget process. And so, when you think about a council, every two weeks, you have an agenda that's published where you vote on things that were ordinances, were essentially laws, laws that are amended. You approve contracts, you approve agreements, and that's important. Fairly recently, the City Council approved a, probably a once-in-a-lifetime water deal, one hundred and eighty-four units of Big Thompson Water, for twelve and a half million dollars, which is a very, very big move that supports affordable housing within our community and also puts ARPA dollars to work. So, every once in a while, you get a really big thing that's teed up for you, where counsel can move on something. That's really cool. Doesn't happen all the time. Budget, however, is something that is just almost as big, but it happens throughout the entire year. You don't necessarily see it once you adopt it, but it's constantly moving, and it's constantly in motion. So, per the city charter, the city charter requires that me, as your city administrator, working with department heads, by the charter, I am tasked with assembling, recommending a budget to the City Council and submitting it to the City Council for your approval. That is one of the, one of the many charter requirements I am tasked with as your city administrator. Counsel adopts the budget. You can amend the budget, and we'll have conversations. And really, counsel, after this, concluding this discussion tonight, you'll have opportunity to look at the budget, and you'll say, well, maybe there's something else I would like to see, something else that's missing, so ultimately, you know, counsel, this, this is your budget, even though it is recommended by me as per, as per charter. And at that same time, you will approve the mill levy. That'll include a few special districts that we have, the fees, utility rates, license fees, development fees. And really, what you want to have is, that's the revenue side of the house, and you wanna make sure that the revenue side of the house and all those fees coincide with the expenditure side. And so, we're getting more sophisticated about that, and you'll see, in the past, we probably might have been, we're getting better at it. I think in years out, we're gonna be even better as we continue to create that congruity between, you know, the studies, the fees, and then the revenue generated by that and how that links to programs. So, the budget calendar process starts all the way back in May. You know, they look at projections, you know, the administration starts looking at things, we start talking to folks, we start looking at what themes are, there are that are important to, that we see, that discussions with you, what I'm hearing in the community, what I'm hearing from staff. So, that's how themes are developed. In June, we review information, departments develop their next-year requests, and so those are submitted, and we have meetings with departments to talk about, what do those requests mean? How do those requests, how do those asks align with where the ship is headed? And, and more often than not, when requests are made, and if they don't make the budget, the answer isn't no, the answer is when. And so, this is not just a one-time proposition. If it doesn't happen now, or it doesn't happen next year, more likely than not, you will see it in subsequent years. So, it's a question of priority. Yes, counsel?
Is it okay if I ask you?
Sure.
Just to clarify, I think I get a lot of how we, with the community survey and from counsel, the themes evolve from there, and then we manage that, so the ship, we know which way to steer the ship. But our economic development plan, I just looked at Peach Festival, it was unbelievable, I thought, how prosperous, or how, it seemed to be very revenue-generating. Do we, how, how can counsel influence revenue generation? Is that, is that not a counsel thing? What really influences that, or? I feel like I need to know, I should know what it is that staff brings to us recommendations, and we can say yes or no. Is there any other pieces that I should be looking at as far as what, besides new iterations on the budget? Is there, is there an overall, is the economic development plan is like the origin, the nest, where revenue is coming from? Or will you come with, come to us and say, like, this is a revenue-generating possibility?
Throughout the process and throughout the year, we will identify opportunities to generate revenue. One of those opportunities, probably a little over a year back, was when our sales tax manager brought forward an ordinance that clarified our ability to be able to collect tax on, for example, the Amazons of the world. That generated approximately a million dollars in new revenue coming into the general fund alone. So, when there are opportunities to, you know, enhance our revenue, we will point that out. And that comes in several different ways. To back up a little bit, structurally, when we created the sales tax division, the mission of that particular division is specifically to make sure that revenue that is out there, we're making sure that we're getting our fair share. And so, that is something that they're constantly watching. And that part of that also, if you, if you recall a while back, counsel greenlighted it. We're in the process of rolling out a business licensing program whereby we're combining the sales tax license and the business license to give us more accurate information. So part of it is information, part of it is policy, and then part of it will also be instructive when we ultimately present the economic development study to council, which will have strategies in there linked to, okay, what, first of all, what is the community looking for? What does the community want? And how does that link to economic development? So it happens at several different levels. It's not just like one thing. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. So in July, department, the requests are presented. And then we go through and we vet quite a bit of information. In August, September, here we are, introduction to budget. So you can see there's quite a little bit that occurs that we're working on before the budget's presented to you. But that's our job. That's our job to vet those things, employ them together, particularly in a council administrator form of government. October and November, that's when the public hearings will start to occur. And then council ultimately will be asked to adopt the budget. So we show this to you because there's, there's quite a bit of work that goes into it. So how do we develop the budget? I like to call this the circle of life. For many reasons, what we do is we really look at economic factors. The economy drives everything. So when we had good economic, you know, performance prior to the pandemic, we paid close attention to that very closely when the pandemic occurred and it started to become very, very serious. We pulled back. We slowed the rate of spending considerably to make sure that we were not overspending, watched everything very closely. And I think as a result, we were very nimble. We were able to navigate through that without any layoffs or any furloughs of municipal employees. We had a handful of, you know, they did, you know, they did it on their own because actually they, they fared better with the state stuff, things that were out there. But there were no interruptions in municipal services and that was not always the case. So the economic factors, those are very fluid, but we watch those closely. We really pay attention and we zoom in on council strategic priorities. Council, you have met more than once off-site, which was also publicized and televised, where you had in-depth conversations regarding what are, what are, what are your strategies? And do they, how do they align with the community? So we really pay attention to those things as well. From there, the departmental plans are developed. And really, that's my responsibility as your city administrator is to make sure that those departmental plans really are the pillars that were the council strategic, where those rest. And I'll tell you, when you, when these are combined and they're working well together, things occur, things move pretty smoothly. Deputy Administrator Doling is going to talk to city council about implementation of the Health and Human Services Tax that the residents, our residents passed back in November by tremendous margins, slightly over 70%. What that tells me as your chief policy advisor is when we're looking at economic factors, strategic council priorities that reflect the values of the community and the departmental plans, those are in alignment. So when you have that kind of congruity and the trust of the public, that really brings this to light. And so that's why those two questions, HHS and public safety, I think really passed because this is in alignment. If this is disjointed and those are not working and they're not in alignment, particularly with the community values, that's when stuff gets bumpy and the public's going to go, well, wait a minute. So I think when you look at this, this isn't just academic. This is something that really happened at the ballot box when, when we had that level of congruity. So the budget approach, our municipal budget, and I've touched on this already, council strategic priorities. You'll see that as a consistent theme that we discuss. Administrator budget philosophy, one of my strongest philosophies when it comes to budget. The budget needs to align with community values. When you have an alignment between community values, a budget that's written well, that supports that, the strategic priorities of council, and then ultimately those priorities of council, when you have that level of congruity, that's one of my strong philosophies, that you're really, you've got that flywheel effect over time. That also, one of my philosophies is that a budget is just not a one-off. A budget is something that should be built on over many, many years. It's not just a one, one point in time. A one-point time budget kind of jumps all over the place. So you'll see consistency. I think that's particularly important. Community values and services, direct services that benefit residents. We're a full-service municipality, which is a nice thing because we have all of those areas that are underneath the umbrella of the city, which actually helps us to be able to pull those things together. Best practices are important. This next year's budget, we estimate probably will be between 95 to 105 million dollars, depending on how we structure it, how much we draw down on reserves. We're still working on what that's going to look like at the end of the day. But you can expect, you know, the sweet spot's going to be right around 100 million dollars for the, the total budget that'll be presented to you for adoption. What's also important is we want to maintain our reserves and balances in there. The city actually overall is in a good place in that area, but we have to pay close attention to that. And the thing is, is using your reserves for, to do stuff, that's not bad. That's not a bad thing. But you want to do one-time reserves for one-time expenditures. You don't want to like increase your levels of service and keep drawing that out of your savings account to maintain that higher level of service. So it's okay to do that every once in a while, but it has to be strategic. It has to be smart and you want to return on your investment for it. So how do funds work? Well, we use this thing called fund accounting. And what fund accounting does is we have all this money in different types of dollars and cents coming into the city. And we need to make sure that they don't get mixed up in a way that isn't clear. So if money comes in to our coffers and it's earmarked, it's designated for a certain thing, it goes into that fund. And so you can imagine there's a lot of things going on and the city has 20 total funds. But the big ones, you really want to pay attention to the general fund. You also want to pay attention to the enterprise funds and then the, the capital funds and then other funds. But you look at the general and enterprise, those are the two big ones. And so general fund is our tax dollars. Enterprise, those are the types of things that come in. For example, water is going to be an enterprise fund, golf is going to be an enterprise fund. Think of an enterprise fund when you hear that term. It's like a business. So the money that comes in has to support the business. So for example, the golf course is supported by the fees generated by the golf course. That's why we call it an enterprise. No taxpayer dollars go into the golf course. Water is the same way. Water, very expensive proposition, but that's paid for by rates and fees. And when you think about it, when it comes to water, that includes building the capital that actually is needed to store, actually capture, store, and transmit. We also have to pay for staff to run all that stuff. Not to mention the things that we have to purchase like chemicals and all that other jazz. They have to have facilities. So there's more that goes into it than just water coming out of the tap. There's a lot of stuff that goes into the backend of it. That goes into your rate and fee studies. So general fund, enterprise funds, capital funds, and other funds. That gives you an idea of the fund accounting that we, that we use. So revenue overview on a citywide basis, if you look to the right, you see the blue sales tax. Sales tax is king, 22% of revenue, that's, that's sales tax. The other one that I'd point out to is property tax. That's at 11%. Property tax is relatively quite stable and we like that. Sales and use tax is more volatile because that's based on, more based on the economy. And user fees, for example, that's again going to be water, which is, you know, one of the biggest, you know, ticket items that, that we have. Interspersed, you've got recreation fees, charges for services and other stuff. But sales tax, property taxes are two big drivers. And then on the enterprise side, you've got user fees. Pay attention.
I have a question.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Difference between transfers and intergovernmental. I thought that was the same thing.
No, actually, in this particular case, the transfers is, it is movements from the, well, it's primarily from the the enterprise funds to the excuse me, the general of fund. And those actually do get attagorized as revenues. So truth be known, you should probably not count those, but, but we kind of have to. So really, so if you exclude transfers, total, I believe the number of total revenues around 81 million dollars, I think, so.
So basically what you're saying, from an auditing perspective, they're looking, they want to see the transfer in and the transfer out, but it's not truly a revenue.
It's not truly a revenue, but we, but as far as our, is, is our budget is concerned, we have to hold it that way. Whereas intergovernmental, those are usually federal grants or state grants or
Thank you.
Great. Good question. So major taxes, sales and use tax and property tax, 45% of government revenue. So those two areas, we pay attention to very closely. So this is really a nice depiction. If you look at the dollar bill, $1 of tax and where it goes within, ranging from all over the state of Colorado to Lafayette. So out of $1, you've got 44 cents that goes to the city of Lafayette, 33 to the state of Colorado. Boulder County gets 11, RTD picks up 11, and SCFD picks up, it's a small number, it's a little, it's a little sliver there. And so if you take that and you translate that to money coming in, to 34 cents to the general fund, .003 to legacy, .003 to open space, that's how we purchase and we maintain open space. Public safety, .03. And then the new mental health and human services, .01. So this gives a nice graphic depiction. So it doesn't just go into one area. It goes into a variety of areas and it's not all the same. So sometimes folks go, well, wait a minute, you know, my tax, I'm paying my taxes, it goes directly to you. It's like, I don't know, there's a lot of other players that I, that actually picked that up. So I'd like to be able to show that too. So let's see, property tax. Property tax is a slightly different paradigm. If you'll note, property tax, if you look at it, BVSD gets 53 cents out of a dollar for property tax purposes. That structure's not particularly unusual. But you looked at school districts, traditionally, there's a lot more revenue from property tax that comes in there. Boulder County, 27 cents. City of Lafayette, 18 cents. 18 cents out of a dollar from property tax goes to the city of Lafayette to provide a full, provide a full range of services. And then you've got some other smaller, you've got to turn your head a little bit. It's not a whole lot of money. But this, yeah, special districts, but this just gives you an idea of how, where property tax goes.
So does the special district for like the stadium, is that out of property or sales?
It says property.
Wait, what?
The stadium.
Or are we, is there no tax anymore?
There's no stadium.
Paid off and done.
Yeah. So the only district from the sales tax or from property tax is urban drainage and northern water. There's no, yeah, there's anything else.
So if you're looking back, if I go
Mile High or, well.
I know, it's like 10 different names now.
Power Field. I know we're still bonds issue, but maybe we pay the model or not.
They're probably coming at us again for that. So anyway, that's a whole other.
That's what's curious. Well, we're part of the metro district that is, yeah, that we get charged for.
If you could pay 80 million dollars for a player, you could, anyway, that's a philosophical. So I back up a little bit. If you look at the sales and use tax piece of it, a very small sliver of it does go into SCFD.
What is the 45%? It doesn't look like 45%.
Oh, on the, our site, so yeah, so what that is, is that's when you about the, the user user fees as well as there's some interest income that those are the proprietary funds. Everything that you then have remaining after that is attagorized as governmental revenue. So the graphic, what the graphic did was it just took out those other two pieces.
Yeah, because it didn't, it didn't remove anything. It didn't change the denominator. So the math looks funny. We should always make sure our math adds up, but.
It does. So the graphic might not look great, but, so I believe governmental revenue last year, I think include transfers, was about 75 million. And if you were to add up sales, use tax, and property tax, that was 33 million. So it's 33 million over 75 million, which is about 45%, I believe. My math is correct.
Got it.
So sales tax, property tax, kind of a summary of expenditures, operating 75% capital. I'm sorry, 75 million, capital 25 million. So the takeaway from that is that as a service organization, we, there's a lot that goes into the operating piece of it because just by nature of what we do is provide services to folks. So that's why you see so much of that in the operating piece of it. And the capital being, being a 25. Capital over time is going to be a conversation with city council. Because we continue to talk about water and we continue to talk about transportation. Those are the two capital-intensive areas. So that's on the horizon. So things that we need to be thinking about. Sure.
So I didn't even know there was a stadium tax. It's
Once upon a time.
Once upon a time, yeah. So I guess what's in my head is what's missing in your experience, revenue or expenses that we haven't dealt with yet. What's in our, what's in any of those camps that we haven't, that's not included right now because we don't have to deal with it right now, but that you see, have seen in the past that cities eventually have to deal with, or we're just dodging?
Yeah, well, I think the biggest thing on our horizon is transportation and how we're going to fund and how we're going to pay for transportation. A lot of organizations or a lot of communities do have a dedicated transportation tax to pay specifically for transportation projects, which they either pay for directly or they bond or, yeah, that's, that's one thing that I have not seen here. And that one thing that does give me pause are the, there are three measures that Boulder County is advancing that potentially could be on the ballot. One is a continuation of their transportation tax. One is a tax related to wildfire mitigation. And there's a question regarding county versus localities. That's a whole other thing. And the third one.
The third one is support the contractual ambulance services that's provided to the western part of the county.
Right. So that's, so those, those three, they seem kind of small, but then you start looking at what our total sales tax, there's a, there's a burden that the public will go, okay, well, wait a minute. So councillor, that's one area that I think is, is worth conversation. I have brought it up before, but I think the transportation piece, once we complete our multimodal transportation plan, the city council gets the unconstrained list of projects that are clearly going to be needed and see the dollars associated with it. That's going to be a significant conversation. So I would see that probably as the one, the one biggest thing that would be on the horizon should the city pursue to, you know, choose to pursue that.
Is BVSD also looking at the tax that's going on the ballot this year too?
Yep, it's, yeah.
Just, there's a lot of hands going in.
There are, there are. And there's a certain, yeah, there's a, yes, I, I agree. The, the good news that I do believe councillor's doubling back is that I think there's clearly a need for the Health and Human Services piece of it. Our community voted over 70% in favor of it. Coming up in the next Coming up in the next couple of months or so, both of the chiefs will be making a presentation to city council regarding best practices. And I had a conversation with Chief Basher this morning, and that the tax question allocated up to four co-responders. And actually, we had two on staff, and we are ramping up to a third. And we're seeing a clear demand in the community for this co-responder service. That is being well-received, but there's clearly a need. That's a new tax for us, so that was, that was kind of skating where the puck's going to go, which was a good thing. The, the public safety tax was also helpful. We had already two public safety taxes in place, but the HHS tax is one that kind of fits into that category, too. So, consumer spending patterns, they are, they are shifting. We're paying attention to that in this environment. Here's the, and you see the tug, the pull and the tug on this, employment is strong, real wage growth is not so strong. And you couple that with the inflationary pressures on there, and that creates a difficult recipe for folks to be able to deal with. Now, the good news is that the city does have a diverse and resilient revenue base, which has served us well when we navigated through the pandemic. And I'll tell you, the other piece is that when the city pulled back on expenditures, so we're not spending as much. The other thing that I've found in this particular organization is staff members are very judicious with the use of public money. I have not seen since I've been here, things overspent within line items, but you know, people are, they're very judicious about, about that. So, that, that's good, because then when that's done, it goes back into fund balance, which is, which is a good thing. So, sales tax, sales and use tax is important. Property tax is clearly our stabilizer, that we pointed out. And we do watch development-related revenue. So, we had a nice big surge in that when that medical R and D firm came in just to the south. So, we had a nice big shot in the arm. That, that was helpful. You're not, that's not sustainable over time, so that clearly has gone down. Other factors are, it's going to be cooling off, though, too, depending on what the Fed continues to do, so we're watching that. Again, aligning revenues to expenditures is important, healthy fund balances, and watching the economic conditions. We watch those, we watch those all the time, as many folks do. So, themes, we talked about themes, and these are things that city council, you have mentioned, they've been part of your discussions regarding strategy, where you would like to see, you know, resources placed. And what's a priority? What kind of things should we be talking about as a community and talking about as an organization? Public safety tax, again, passed by over, over sixty percent, clearly a need. Mental and health human services tax, passed by over seventy percent. And councillor, you should be very pleased with how aligned and how in touch, when you place those ballot measures on the ballot, they clearly align with community values, and there was clearly a need. The other piece of the two that I've talked to staff about, and I've mentioned to many of you, is that the level of public trust that's exhibited when they say, yes, we're going to vote in favor of something, we could devise the most intricate or most wonderful ballot questions, but if the public didn't say, you know what, I trust you to implement that on behalf of our community, that's big. And that really says something when you look at jurisdictions up and down the front range, that this last ballot, this last election cycle, a lot of stuff didn't pass, which is, you know, it's unfortunate, but the public, they, they pay attention to this stuff, too. Voters pay attention to this stuff. Water conservation is going to be a consistent theme. We've got some stuff that we're noodling on, but I think that we're going to be bringing forward that council will really, and the community, I think, will be excited about. That'll dovetail with the first Zurich plan, that we're about ready to award contract on that, which is a very exciting project. Mobility goes to the multimodal, the multimodal transportation plan. Business retention, that goes councillor to the economic development component and the relationships that we have with the Business Community Act, because economic development is, is really key. It's the relationships, it's strategy, how can we be smart? What kind of things are we looking for that reflect community values? So, you're going to see a theme of business retention that's going to be, it's part of the budget, too. Yes.
And is it fair to say that real, real wage rates, I don't know if that's a, the way, real wages is, we don't have any. We can't do anything to influence that. We can just make sure the businesses are there.
Businesses are healthy, businesses are there. We do the best we can to create a climate where business can be conducted without, you know, not a lot of red tape. We can move quickly. In some cases, if we see, you know, need, now, I'm really excited about the outcome of the economic development study, because I really think there's going to be some instructive things in there. There will be gaps. There will be programs to help fill some of those gaps that we're probably not aware of. And where leakage is occurring, we probably anecdotally have ideas. We're going to get some relevant data on that. I think that will, that'll be helpful. The business retention, you touched on that councillor, multiple times, even in our one-on-one conversations, you've discussed business retention, and that's going to be important. The comprehensive plan implementation, we've put some significant resources to make sure that, you know, we are making sure that the plan that was adopted has code behind it to actually make sure that it's implemented. I've seen communities adopt a plan, and the plan looks, we got the plan, the plan looks good. Okay, well, they refer to the plan. Well, what's the code? You need the code behind it to back, to backstop it, and that's important. We're doing that, which I think is a really good move, and it's a multi-year, it's a big deal. It's a big, big lift. But the plan implementation is going to be really important. That's something, that is huge foundational work over time that's really going to have a community impact. So, another area of investment, as I shared with you as a reminder, public safety did very well in the last ballot cycle. Public safety support for both the fire and rescue services, in addition to the police department. That funded additional firefighter paramedics, that funded co-responders, that funded additional police officers, in addition to maintaining equipment, which is necessary. For example, self-contained breathing apparatus for firefighters that when they're responding, I mean, so we've created a fund to be able to replace a lot of that, because that equipment is not cheap, but we need to, we need to plan for it. You can't just wait for something to wear out and then just say, oop, we need, you know, boy, we need a new fire truck. There's seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars alone. That's the stripped-down version anymore. But you got to, you got to plan for that kind of stuff, so that ballot question did that. So, with that said, public safety has been well-funded, so we're able to prioritize internal services that provide service to the entire organization, and that helps with efficiency. And so, in some cases, when you have departments doing stuff, that some internal service functions, if they had more resources to do, that can help departments focus on more of their core mission, as opposed to things like purchasing or other things of that nature. You know, a good procurement manager will pay for themselves over and over again, as does a sales tax auditor. So, it's kind of being smart about that stuff. So, capacity and efficiency is a theme that you'll see. Economic and hiring pressures, we're seeing that, all communities are seeing that up and down the front range. Small businesses are having difficulty with things like that. So, we need to also be mindful about wages and benefits. We have to be competitive responsibly, but we do struggle in every city department regarding hiring and retention. And so, that's going to be a focus of this budget as well, in addition to benefit structure. The city has a very robust benefit structure. That is something that we are, we, by all accounts, will be maintaining, which is a very important draw, but it's, it's a combination of things. That goes to core services, IT infrastructure, payroll, human resource systems. And if you make some strategic moves on the internal pieces of it, it's going to really help the line departments provide better service to folks. Radi analysis is underway for water, stormwater, water reclamation. That's a really big study. And when we come back out and start having those conversations, remember when I touched on providing water and stormwater, there's, or just water alone? There's a lot of other stuff that goes on behind it. It's like, what's the capital behind it, purchasing the water rights and then maintaining all those things? Then you got staff, too, so you got to, you got to think of all that stuff when you're providing water. It's not just providing water. There's other things that we have to consider. And you bring someone in from the outside that can identify legally what that nexus is when you make fee recommendations. Yes.
Could you just speak a little of how the transportation issues that are coming up are going to impact capacity? Hiring pressures, are they, because it comes, those big capital expenditures are going to come with their own money, so it won't impact the city's situation? Or am I diluted?
Are you suggesting that transportation grants are coming with their own money, and therefore we don't have to match them?
Yes.
That's not true.
Okay. With that said. Does it hit us directly in capacity and efficiency, or if we have to make matching funds? Do, how are we, is, are we vulnerable here?
It's, it's a mix. It's definitely mixed.
Yeah, I'd say at least with regards to this particular bullet point, what we are looking at as it started to, City Minister Sprague started to address, was we've, we've done a lot of external-facing investments over the last couple of years with the public safety tax. In this budget, what you'll see is a lot more internal-facing investments. And so, the staff in internal services, and what this helps do by investing in staff in finance or HR or IT, helps with the capacity of the entire organization, helps with the efficiency of the entire organization. And so, that is more related to it. With regards to the overall kind of impact of transportation priorities, absolutely. As you look at that list, that's going to have to come with different conversations on priorities. In some instances, transportation projects may be just a one-time, and we could use fund balance. But I think what we're going to find is that there's a lot of kind of core vision zero safety aspects that are ongoing that we're going to need to invest in and try to balance with other priorities that we have. But from, from a 2023 specific initiative, that bullet was really related to more of a, you'll see probably a less sexy version of a budget, but more focusing on now that we've got a new interim finance director, we've got a new HR director, they can really hone in on what their needs and what the gaps have been over the last couple of years.
So, stand by for more weight analysis, stormwaters. And we brought that to you last year. We really had to move quickly in order to bring that to council, but we felt it was important before the current structure in place, brought the current structure in place, so. And this is a best practice. You need to be looking at this on a regular basis, because if you don't, you fall so far behind, and then it's just, it's, it's very difficult to catch up. And then implementing the major strategic plan, there are a lot of plans that we're working on. I like to call this, well, last year and this year. It's year first for a lot of plans that have traditionally, that haven't been written or haven't been engaged. And it's, it's also considered to be a best practice. So, if you, ta-da. So, if you look at, we're going to be looking at funding gaps, user fees, capital priorities, and operating expenditures. So, we've got the economic housing and strategic plan that is underway. We have the multimodal transportation plan that also is going to feed into funding and capital priorities and, you know, operating components. Utility rate studies, we just touched on that just not too long ago. That's a best practice, but we need to have a realistic, intellectually honest picture of what it costs to provide this service to our residents and to our customers. Library cultural arts strategic plan, first one to my knowledge ever, which will be, I think, very instructive of what funding will be necessary or how that links in that area. Space study, we have a lot of facilities, and right now, we have a decentralized way of looking at space. And so, over time, you want to look at, okay, what's, what facilities do you have, what, when do you have, what adjacencies make the most sense from an operational standpoint? And so, that's, that's a long-term proposition as well, but it also lends itself to significantly better service delivery. It just, you know, you're not, you know, you're not losing time and money just because things, again, were built on like a one-off model. So, that's, that's a longer proposition.
Can we save money there with space? More efficient use of our space?
I would say it's more efficient. I would say better service delivery. I would not say necessarily you save money. Zero escape plan, this is really exciting. So, we're down to, actually, talking to Monty, they have their contractor of choice. They received some very favorable bids, and so they're going to be making a recommendation for award of that contract. That work will proceed, and then there is, there will be money in the budget next year. And I'm recommending a significant investment in order to launch this plan, and these are for municipal facilities to be able to demonstrate to the public that the city, we're requiring and we're asking people to, you know, engage in Zurich, to pull back, to, you know, the traditional lawn that uses tons of water. This will place us in a position to be able to say, hey, not only does Zurich work, we can be a model for this. But I want to make sure that, see, you got to write, you write the plan, but then you got to put the funding behind the plan. And that's, that's the idea part, what I touched on before, how about budget. That's what makes it kind of cool, because it connects that, because it makes it go. So, more on this, but this, this is one, I think that one's going to be really, that one's going to be really cool. City's first wildlife plan that is now underway. Council, you voted to award that contract, so that work is starting. And the branding study, that communications department's ramping up. So, you see all these things that are underway, that all point, they're going to point toward funding gap, user fees. So, there's all going to be an ask associated with it. So, you're going to see there's some balancing going on. But I think it's really important for council to see the whole array of everything as opposed to just one, because this is, this is the budget, really, in reality. This is the balance that that needs to be achieved, needs to occur. So, coming forward, September twenty-ninth, we're going to have a work session where we're going to really be able to dig more into things. There'll be much more substantive things for council to be able to react to. This is a higher-level overview of what, what you can expect coming. October first, October twentieth, you'll have first reading, November first, you'll have second reading of the budget. So, those are the next three steps coming up. So, what's the next step? So, we always talk about next steps. Well, what are the next steps? So, we've got a council workshop we're going to present, and we're going to discuss with a focus on outcomes from the budget. We will talk, we'll putting a finer point on funding recommendations that are linked to themes. And we're going to ask council, we're going to lay this out, the broader framework, and ask council, are we headed in the right direction? Is this the direction that makes sense based upon everything? We've talked about your value, you know, propositions that you bring to the table as elected leadership. And then we'll set the stage for first reading. But the workshop, there'll be, you'll be able to really dig into more of the substance that we'll present to you.
Sorry, I'm Mr. Question Person tonight?
No, that's great. It's good.
Are we going to link the themes like we do with the agendas, the packet?
Yes.
Okay. Well, to the budget, like, the themes that were in this presentation, well, will we be able to know where in the budget they're?
Yes. Yes, and we, yeah, because actually, we've already started thinking about what, what that's going to look like. So, we'll have that, we'll have the theme and then broader theme, but what's the, where does rubber meet the road? Okay, what resources are going in to support that theme? And you'll, you'll see that at the next, the workshop.
I would like to tell my fellow councillors that LISA and RAC are very curious about the impacts of not just the Zurich plan, well, the Zurich plan, really, and water usage and water in the city, so they're curious to see if there is, if there's any noticeable improvements in water usage. But that's, over time, we've got to get the plan, then we have to like install stuff, but they are considering looking at what impact it's actually making for the city.
And it should, it should make an impact. You don't want to, it should. You don't want to, and it needs to be measurable, too, right?
Yeah, and they're looking, they want to do it. They want to measure stuff, because they, they like to measure things.
They, they like data.
They do, they, they got rulers, they got.
Can you give us the budget early? Meaning, not three days or five days before that, that council or that study session?
We'll get it to you as soon, well, the budget's not, the budget's not prepared at that point. We have, it's, it's, it's getting there at that point, but if you're looking for a budget budget, it's not going to be prepared until we have something ready for first reading. So, we're going to have a lot of the framework in place, so following the discussion or presented to council as part of that workshop. So following the discussion or presented to council as part of that workshop, there'll be considerable framework, but we want to make sure it's, we're marching toward that, because there may be some changes in there. So like, we couldn't produce something and then we'd have to go back and change it, so it's instructive on how we're getting.
Yeah, but usually what you've got in the budget is a broad line item. So you don't, we're not going to say, oh, this is what's happening and you're getting a reduction here and you're, you know what I mean? You're, you're, you're doing a theme. Boom. This is what it is. And so then, speaking as to what happened in 2019, a lot of us were like, what does that mean? What does that mean? What is entailed in there? So for all of us to be able to get our questions down, whether we're writing it on there or paper, I feel like we need some time really in that meeting to truly ask those questions, but it's difficult when it's a broad line item. And so it kind of helps ahead of time for us and for you, for us to say, okay, that theme says that, what are you really thinking in terms of that? Is, you know, what's the timing of that? What's happening? Because budgeting also has a lot to do with timing. So I guess I'm trying to figure out a way for us to look at it and then get back the questions to prepare you all and give you all answers before we get into that study session then.
We can get to you as much as we can. I don't want to overpromise. I don't want to say, oh, absolutely, we'll, we'll be able to do this right off the shoot. We can get you, we can attempt to get you the workshop materials as soon as we possibly can. We have more time between now and then. We've had, there's been a lot of work behind the scenes.
Yeah.
So.
When did you start, May? Katie?
Didn't start developing our recommendations until a couple of weeks ago. So those are now finalized.
Yeah.
I will say that we definitely will have a lot more materials than you've had in the past as far as being able to prepare for the conversations.
I think that's fair.
And there's a good chunk of time between your September 29th work session and your first reading to allow for that as well. So I think we got the budget book done on the second reading last year. You'll certainly have it at first and more naming perhaps in there as well.
Yeah, and I'm not really looking at the budget book perspective. It's really just, okay, what's our spreadsheet? What are we looking at? So, you know, as Tim starts asking questions, he has the ability to look at it, as the rest of us have the ability to look at it really ahead of time and dig in. Yeah.
Each year, since, I mean, it's gotten better.
Oh.
It's gotten incrementally better. And I think the, what's going to be presented this year is going to be, I know it's going to be better than it has been even the year before.
Sure.
So.
All right.
My last slide is that we're doing it.
That's what we're doing. So we've already had a few of those, a few of those questions. So that's what the next steps are going to look like, council. So we're happy to answer any questions, but the workshop will be, you know, we're going to, we're going, that's the, that's the digging into it, you know, mode. But hopefully this is helpful, kind of frames how we're, how we're approaching it, how we're flying it in. I don't know, Katie, Devin, any additional thoughts you want to add?
All right. Any final questions? Yeah, go ahead, Council Walton.
I have some questions for staff and then I wanted to propose a discussion among counselors. And for the counselors, I was curious about looking at the near and next list that came out of our workshop that was emailed to us, if you want to pull it up on March 28th, from So a couple of questions for staff. How are you incorporating in the planning any consideration for expenditures or fund budget needs for boards and commissions? And feel free to defer any answers to the next workshop. We've talked about making it a priority for our city events to be, you know, that we're walking the talk as far as zero waste events, for example. And so are there funds that they need? Does the potential of sustainability committee or, you know, any initiatives that boards and commissions have? I feel like we hear about them, we are liaisons too, they work on strategic plans, but I have never really actively seen as part of the budget process, a way for them to say, we want to do these three things and we're going to need some extra money, or that it is, that those are elevated to the priority of a department line item. So I, I'd like to see that get better rolled into our budget process. You mentioned doing a budget book. That's awesome. Love that. I feel like this time last year, we were starting to get a sense of revenue projections, but I didn't see that in the presentation tonight. So what is the, when will we see some of that information?
You will certainly see that on, I think it's September 29th. But, I mean, so I, I think I came to present to y'all in July. And when I came and presented, we were forecasting that sales and use tax was pretty strong. We were starting to see it slow down. And over the last sort of month and a half since then, that, that has happened, not, 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 not in a horrible way or anything. But, so, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to land on something today. I'd like to give it a few more weeks, but it'll be adequately conservative. And I will say, I will say that our construction use tax is, has deteriorated fairly quickly over the last couple of months, which is not a surprise. So, because we had a very large project in June of last year, which, which we didn't see in June of this year. So if you compare year over year, it's significantly lower.
Okay, so you'll be bringing some actual percentages and figures then at the workshop in September?
Absolutely, yes.
Is there, I, I'm starting to feel anxious and interested in pursuing the commercial linkage fee. We've talked about the opportunity to increase that, but wanting the study before we took action. So what, I feel like we've been talking about that one for a while. I'd like to see, I don't know if that, I know that can be separate from a budget, but if there is an opportunity to put some timing and understanding on when we could do that and if there's an opportunity to factor in a budget conversation.
What was that?
Commercial linkage fee? Are you talking about just specifically at commercial buildings and for what purpose?
Yeah, so for the, for affordable housing, yeah. We increased it, was it maybe two and a half or three years ago? Was it after you had started, right? And try to like?
Right, yeah, for like my second meeting, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, you know, the fees that we have for residential and for commercial, there, we have increased both. But there is, there are, in comparison for our commercial fee that we charge, it is, there are other neighbors who have a much higher rate, but we've been conservative in doing that until we really have a, the study done.
And you'd have to have a study to do the linkage fee?
As a part of that, that user fee study?
It's less about the user fee study, the intent, when we updated some of our other impact fees with Tischler Bice was that they knew that we were doing this economic development housing study and they needed certain data points to be able to put that together. And so as soon as the economic housing study is wrapped up, they've been in talks with Tischler Bice to at least know what data they need, so that by the time that gets wrapped up, we'll have Tischler Bice engage in it. This is no small feat, especially to increase linkage fees, but we absolutely need that professional background and study to do it. And then again, the choices, right, of how high, because usually they'll come back to you and say, here is the maximum you could charge, but oftentimes communities won't do the maximum, they'll do what they think their community and the associations will handle. So that is in the works. I don't know that the timing aligns necessarily exactly with first or second reading of this
So, yeah, so those, I think, are my, some of my questions for staff. And I was just wondering for council, in terms of the near and next list, as I, as they look at that, I, there are some really, you know, specific things. And I would be interested in sort of knowing and hearing or having a discussion about what, what's popping for priorities for all of you and, and then maybe we can, it sounds like it will be more of the discussion at our next meeting, but we're already starting to see some of those themes here. So just wondered if this list still resonates or if there have been other things that have come up over the past year that weren't even on that list?
Yeah, I'm looking at this right now, but is this a conversation you want to be tied into this budget conversation?
Yeah, because I think if we don't fund our priorities and make sure they're lining up with our spending.
So you just want to talk about where the priorities are and should they get some budget consideration essentially?
Yeah, yeah. And I feel like, you know, we, we, we come to these workshops and the staff gives us a lot of information, but we just don't really like give ourselves the opportunity to have some discussion. And I just thought maybe if we start thinking about it now, that gives us time between now and the work, next workshop to noodle on it. Maybe it would prompt some further discussions or it maybe would give the staff a heads up on what's popping or not. And that may impact the work that they do over the next month in preparation for that workshop.
I think it would be good for council to take a look at the near and next. We could, that was sent to you in the report and we'd be happy to circulate that again, because the, the near is 2012 to 24 months. And so there are items in there and then the next is in the future beyond that. So understanding the near next, that was developed with the understanding that there's going to be a sequence. But if you look at it, I think you'll probably go, oh, wow, there are, there are some definite things that are, that are moving along.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in months 13 through 24, right? As we're talking about the budget as far as that near list goes in your mind, is that correct?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's fair. But you, yeah, it is, right. And you can't just say the budget is this to this and then you got nears, next is this to this. There's, there's, there's an overlay. In some cases, there's maybe more opportunity between that, you know, in the near piece that we can make more progress on. And then there might be some where we pull back a little bit, but I think if you, if you look at that, you're going to see quite, you know, that there's, are we getting at everything? No, we're not getting everything. Are we getting it quite a little bit? Yeah, there's, there's, there's quite a bit that has been touched or movement. Does, does it mean it's going to get over the finish line? Not necessarily. But I think when you compare that list that council helped develop with your last op site in terms of what this progress and stuff that's occurring and what's in the budget, I think you'll see quite a bit of alignment. I don't know, Katie, if you have anything else? You were, you were at that retreat as well.
No, I agree. I think we can certainly circulate it and then talk about it. But yeah, I look at some of the support building corners development needs, like there's more to talk about, but you guys did a huge thing about that. We can update you all on some of our DEI trainings that actually our least true bashers been pioneering for early next year, that safety measures talked about tonight. So there's definitely movement on some items and definitely like all work plan stalling on others because of timing and capacity, but I'd be happy to sort of talk through where the funding's going and some of these isn't necessarily funding specific, but work plan integration.
Yep.
Is there one or two in particular, Council Walton, that you would like to further discuss a little bit or ensure that is prioritized in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, I think two that I see here that can be combined along with another priority that came up during our workshops is the, the DEI training and hiring practices along with translation and services that came up a few, a couple of months ago. A council comments that Councilor Briggs brought up. And then we also talked about it in terms of the, you know, just, I think it was maybe in one of our workshops where we were focused on the naming policy and the Mary Miller name and just the opportunity to better look at all policy through a lens of DNI. And, and if there were some policies or checklists and kinds of things that maybe you could look at applying, so that regardless of, you know, a policy, a legislative action, that the staff had sort of that lens that they could be putting. So those kinds of things, that kind of all buckets together for me. And so when I, when I see the priorities that are toward staff and more of an internal focus that, that sort of maybe falls under that, that category, but, you know, I think a lot of the investment that we may see are internally focused, but really in the end, it means probably much better customer service for the citizens and guests and business people. But also, you know, that in turn builds the credibility and the trust in the city. And so like what you're saying on the, on that circle pie chart, you know, where everything lines up, you know, if we are going to be looking at a couple of things on the horizon for ballot initiatives, while it might not be a lot of outward facing things, hopefully some of the, those internal expenditures will just help improve that. But I wonder, I feel like the, sort of the next steps on the DEI, you are going to maybe have a conversation there with the city administrator and, or just if anybody else has had any more thoughts since we've talked about it.
Can I throw in one little plug for the DEI thing?
Sure.
Human Rights Commission is about to bring, it's 100% related to this, some information and recommendations to council. It's very similar to DEI, but I don't want to take all their, you know, thunder away, but, but with an additive accessibility and access. So I would love to give them the opportunity to kind of present that. And as far as businesses go, you brought it up and so did you. I, I don't know about all businesses, but I can say construction wise or like contractors and whatnot, the city of Lafayette is amazing to pull a permit through. Amazing, lightning speed, quicker than any other municipality in Boulder County. I hear it all the time from other contractors and in, in a lot of the, some of the older contractors, they don't understand all these portals and whatever, they can just fax over or email over to Michelle and she's like, okay, I got your proof of insurance. Or like Boulder County's like, no, 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 it needs to be in this portal, this way. Like it's, Lafayette makes it so easy for folks to just, you know, they're, they're amenable and easy to work with and just as long as you have the information, it's on a piece of paper, an email or however, they accept it. And it's, I hear it all the time and I see it all the time when I'm pulling permits. It's just so easy and amazing, so.
Hashtag what makes Lafayette great.
Yeah. So I don't know about other businesses, but I know on that little front, you guys got that going.
Could I add to the question about the DEI? Because I, one of the themes on the Ferris wheel of happiness there that we saw was the strategic plan for the library and.
Cultural arts.
Cultural arts. And I'm wondering if you, how, how do you feel about that being an initial maybe proof of some of, some of what's learned in their strategic plan, planning, informing the broader city? Do you think that's?
Yeah, I mean, that. Yeah, I mean, that, that sounds good. I mean, I don't, I, I guess I was thinking of some of these things as more city, city employees, city staffs, city related. How we as council can be, you know, how more of our meetings can be translated or have subtitles on the stream and on the, you know, all the places it goes. How our hiring practice, practices can be better considered, how our policymaking can be more equitable, equitably minded.
And I think, no, I think you brought up, you know, some really good points, just something to highlight or reiterate and stuff, because I know internally that a lot of this stuff is already happening.
Right. That's fortunate. We're working on these, these hiring practices, but I guess with Councilor Walton, and I think the rest of the council agrees upon is this ensuring, you know, those kind of practices have the right funding mechanisms in place to ensure that they, they're, they're continuous and that they thrive as a part of this budget conversation. But I, I know we had talked earlier a little bit about some of the stuff going on and you said you were sending some department heads to various trainings.
We, we are, we are mayor and we made a commitment to, a, a, part of it is the succession planning in addition to, you know, executive investment. So we are sending our, all the department heads through the LEED program through the University of Virginia. We'd hope to do that pre-COVID. We are now in a position to be able to do that. The timing is great because LEED has actually updated their coursework. It is considered to be one of the top local government onsite, experiential, but also, you know, it's, it's a great program. I went through LEED and I went through Senior Executive Institute through the University of Virginia at their Darden School of Business. Katie is also a graduate. Jeff Arthur also is a graduate. So we've had, let's see, Debbie and Jeff Brazel and Rick, Chief Basher went through the coursework probably about a month and a half ago, right around there. There's a significant DEI component to that. Right now, Sarah and Melissa are back in Charlottesville right now, going through the one week training and it's fairly intensive, but it's incredibly valuable and it's focused primarily on local government leaders. They meet people from all across the United States. I found it incredibly valuable and so we're putting all department directors through that. It's a much more elevated approach, so everybody has the same level of information. Dr. Hannah actually is their, she's their expert on diversity, equity and inclusion. And she actually teaches one of the modules at the University of Virginia. I asked Chief Basher if he would be the organizational lead to work with her and bring a program to our city. And so what we, what we're striving to do is get all of the executive team through the training, which we will have accomplished by the end of the year. It's a big lift, but there's a strong commitment from administration and from the team too. The team's really excited about doing this kind of stuff. And then Dr. Allen will actually be in a position at the beginning of the year to have a conversation with city council, participate in a council level discussion regarding diversity, equity, inclusion, that will also include city staff as well. And so we're in the process of pulling that together. The people that have attended spoke very highly of her approach to this and we're excited about doing it. So I appreciate the mayor bringing that up. He and I had a conversation a while back regarding this and so we're, you know, putting resources, time and energy into it. And so, you know, I know Katie's actually helped coordinate department head attendance at this. We really, this is a high quality program. Our hope also, or actually what we'll be doing is cascading that down within the organization. So it's not just an executive function that's going to be at the division manager level and also folks that we believe that are up and coming. So those folks that are, you know, we're saying, this is some talent that we really want to develop, we need to put some resources into that. And that really goes to your succession planning because that's not just somebody moving up, that's people that overlap. So if somebody steps back or they're out for a little while, we can fill in. And so there's that cross training that that goes on. So it's not just, you know, it impacts all parts of the organization. So I appreciate, Mary, you bringing that up. So Katie, if you want to, did you want to?
So what kinds of actions then come out of that? And what kind of measurements are you putting in place that we can see the fruits of all of that investment? That sounds like an awesome program.
Yeah, we're excited about it. Dr. Allen is going to help us with, with that and I really would rely upon her, that's her area of expertise. And so that, she's committed to helping us with that. But I think also she'll be engaging city council, she'll be talking to you individually and then also having a discussion with council as a whole. And so I see that and that's coming up in January. We've, we've got dates identified that will be rolling out September, no, it's October 4th, we have a Zoom with her in Virginia, a team here at the executive level to continue that conversation. I asked Chief Basher as our chief of police to be the, the executive sponsor of this within the organization. He's jumped in and he's all, he's, he's all over it, has multiple conversations. So, you know, we're, we're moving forward. So he's, he's definitely embraced it.
Yeah, I would really want to make sure too that our judge and prosecutor, you know, are involved in that conversation as well. It's where you see another opportunity to, you know, have some equitable experiences and services for, for people engaged with our city at that, at that outward facing point.
That's a really good point.
The, so from a budget standpoint then, I appreciate the update, it's great to hear that. I am interested in, you know, if there are opportunities for improving the translation piece, we always incorporate that in a lot of community engagement, so that's usually baked in those planned budgets. But is there anything from an IT standpoint that we can do to have more subtitles, more translation services available at our meetings, key meetings and things like that? That would be a budget, maybe a budget light item. And then if there are any things that HRC has on the horizon that ought to be considered, hopefully Melissa would be, be bringing that up. And I think to Councilor Barnes' point, you know, anything, and hopefully with this training, there are ladders of implementation and action that start to be seen and, and filtered through. But I think if we have an overall lens, and I think there are communities that, that do that, so I guess that's probably not so much a, a budget, a budget opportunity unless there are any strategic initiatives out there.
So Communications Director Alma has actually been helping in that regard, also liaising with, between administration and IT. So she probably has a quick update in that area. So following our conversations, I know Councilor Briggs, we've had conversations regarding that. We have been working on that, trying to find something that could be implemented easily, maybe at a reasonable or reasonable cost or whatnot. So we always try to find those things, understanding that that would be a discussion. And this is, this is a topic, you know, the, the accessibility piece of it. And so this is actually a really good conversation because some of the stuff that we're talking about that could, that you'll probably see in a recommended budget is going to go directly towards some of the things that we're talking about.
Well, I guess I'd rather like kind of know, like this is the, this is the gold, this is the silver, what I, you know, if there are tiered programs that, and you're, and you're recommending one, I guess if, if you, if we're having to sort of make concession and not go with other things, I want to know, I guess they'd be interested in some of these things, particularly where it's a council priority, what we're not doing that maybe could be on the horizon or that we're making the collective informed decision that we know we're not going with the, you know, as far as we could, but we're doing that informed and we're making a, a decision to do something different. So totally understand if that were the case. And I would hope that we, if we get creative and we really push for it too, that I think, you know, there could be some, there could be more opportunities that, that exist out there.
Want to give, Mary, about time to chance to jump in?
So I think what we're hearing, or what I'm hearing is a couple of things. Number one, I think it would be great just to get an update because I know that staff and Sarah have been doing a lot lately with DEI training, so I think that would be helpful just to understand what we've done so far and then maybe what additional items could be done with funds. Because I keep on hearing, well, what have we done? I know we've done stuff, right? And I also think, when I think about diversity, I don't know if anybody else has noticed, but the diversity of our police force, our police officers, it's, it's very diverse. And every time I see, you remember, I'm like, ooh, wow, yeah. I mean, it's, it's happening and so that's great. So I think that would be great for an update when we talk about DEI from a hiring standpoint and what we've got for training, because that would be great. I'm sure things are already being done because Sarah with his knowledge, coming from California, obviously a little more progressive than Colorado is in those steps, great, I think that would be helpful. And then maybe if there are some additional steps that require funding that we'd like you to kind of consider about. But I, I kept on hearing two different things. I kept on hearing, what are we doing versus what can we do? And I think to me, those are two different topics. But I would just love to know what we've done in the last 12 months and then what we're, what we'd like to see money for.
Yeah, I wasn't even asking what are we doing, so I didn't really know any of those things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, and I'm just, I'm just guessing based on, you know, but I think about all the different city events I've gone to and different officers that I've met that are new to the department and I was like, wow, we're actually, we're fairly diverse. So I know I met another officer walking into the chambers tonight, so, you know, I think that's great. So it'd be great just to hear from the chief where we're at or Sarah, HR director, whatever's appropriate. But I think there's been some great, at least these from my perception, there's been some good movement, so it'd be great to just see the data behind it.
Yeah, maybe that's an update for, for a later meeting, just an update on where we are.
Mary, I had one other item too.
Yeah, let's, let's do one more item for Councilor Walton and then.
You said if you have two and that was one and now I have a second one.
I know, I know, just because we do have another item on our agenda for the evening that we need to get to pretty soon. So I just want to remind council of that. And then, you know, after, after Councilor Walton, if there's any burning questions, let's answer those and then let's, let's move on.
So we have a lot of plans and I'm not seeing specificity here. And so I'm curious like from counselors, if there are plans where we would implement, start implementing some of these plans and where we would put funding, what kind of rises to the top for everybody?
More than another? More than another?
Yes, yeah. Because there are things that I'm not seeing on this list that I think, ooh, those are real priorities for us, but I don't necessarily see them real detailed here. And so I'm really curious about like kind of the, the next level or two to kind of double click on multimodal transportation plan and see, you know, what really is under, under that. And Laura, in our near and, near and next, we've talked, we have Laura and Coop planning on here. And then the other one that just seems to be like not really, I'm not sure where it maybe is falling, but just we have to start turning up the fire on climate priorities.
Oh, gosh, no fun intended.
So, you know, and that just is so broad. So how, how could we? How can we have some more conversations and discussions, dig deeper into some of that, that then gets us really specific to budget funding? Because it seems like that's going to have to be a priority. And we all have seen like what, what keeps, there's like the stuff that needs to happen at the local level and stuff that happens at the federal level. So what really are, what at the local level can we do? And are we really putting some priority, priorities in our, with our budget behind those initiatives?
Right. And I'm wondering, yeah, I'm wondering how that falls into like our building codes. I think that I mean locally. Because I'm looking at the plans right now.
That's part of the reiterate system.
Yeah, I mean, we've got the plans and we've got our rewrite because of the comp plans and we have our near and next list and they kind of, some zhuzhen and some don't, but, you know, and then even with the plans, there's like the near and next, like zero escape is an easier lift than multi-molder transportation. Like it's a little bit easier, a little bit of a, you can see the fruit of that labor quicker. Molder mold is going to be a long haul.
It looks like we need new staff. Bring higher more staff. Whatever you need, let's get it back.
Working on it.
See, see what you did there? There's a solution. I'm listening to you all and I'm like, oh, the solution is hire more staff.
So when we had that history conversation last week, we kind of heard like what, you know, maybe some funding opportunities there would be. We have the historic preservation plan. Maybe there are some things there that could line up with, with what we've heard, but I don't necessarily see that, you know, any specifics here. Does that, does that rise to the top for anybody?
So which part?
The historic preservation plan that we adopted.
So, sorry, I'm confused a little bit. Can you just sort of clarify what the, your overall goal for this current conversation is? Like what are you, what are you looking for?
Discussion, planting some seeds about what maybe isn't on this list that, that, just to remind everybody about, is it important or not?
Right, and so these, I mean, I think everything was on this slide here, these are stuffs that we are currently working on, the plans that are existing.
Right, and these, these are the plans. And so the plans have actually subsets to them. So there's, there's a lot that falls out from this. This was really intended to show here, here are the plans or initiatives that are currently underway that the city is undertaking. That will be to the discussion tonight, which makes a lot of sense, that goes to the funding piece of it. So, but this is to illustrate, look, here's, here's the range. It kind of looks like a peacock.
I just think that, so the point I was trying to make is that I don't think these are necessarily like these are our priorities right now, this is just what we're focusing. It's more of a, let's show what's currently happening and that doesn't necessarily mean other plans and other, other things are falling to the side. It's more so they're just explaining what's happening in 2023, what's forecasted for the near future.
And so I guess I'm just saying, is there anything not here? Or is there anything that's not packaged in a way that is meeting our priorities or the urgency of climate change, for example?
Yes, there are things that are not here. And I'm lucky enough to have exposure to our sustainability coordinators, like vision of where we could go and all that's being done and not just in events or with the, the committees. But I'm, I'm, you know, it'd be great to have everyone in on the meetings because they do, they're having broader discussions. And I would like to say that what we can do around climate change has a lot to do with cleaning up our act. And I mean that in a very respectful way, like there's some waste that's really an issue and having a greater focus on things we can do, building electrification ban on natural gas, really looking hard at what does it mean to get more solar into the city? And how much of an impact is that going to take? They're really looking forward, I think, to combining forces because it's amazing how many times their discussions bleed over on, on one another. So the, the new coming together of those individuals, I think what I've said over and over again is that it'll be.
Question, are you talking about the two, LSAT or LEAC in? Is that who you're talking about, coming together? Okay, so I didn't know there was something you said, they're coming together. I didn't, I wasn't, I was assuming that was it, but I wanted you to confirm.
There's, you couldn't see the little picture in my head.
No, really, it did pop up, so. One little clarification.
I say to both of them, like council needs to hear from you. And I've made it clear that it's time that they put together, they don't know, they don't even realize that it would be good for us to hear from them for what they're doing in RAC. You've heard from RAC. I don't think we've heard from LEAC yet, but since I've been at council. And they have a lot to say. I don't, you know, I, I want them to bring like updates. So like, what are we doing along the lines of looking at electrification? Because it's happening, you know, within the city. And those are the bits and pieces, this zero escape plan, they talk about all the time, but not all the time, they talk about zero escaping, they'll talk about the plan because it's going to be a big deal. And those are the kind of things that. And those are the kind of things that I think they should bring forward because it isn't clear.
Well, I think, I think if, if you and if you through the other six of us, if, I mean, between now and that September meeting and really giving direction on this budget and any influence on this budget, where there are line items that are missing or need to be urgently ramped up for initiatives that, because it will, it will continue in a board and commission to be discussion. And there maybe are enough of the little things that are happening in a lot of places that, that kind of add up to like, okay, we're doing what we can afford, what's, what are the 10 things that we wish we had money to do that we can't do, but that we really understand what those are too. And if we feel strongly about something that we are given the opportunity, the space to discuss, maybe something else doesn't happen and maybe something that's over here on this list of 10 things, we feel strongly enough to give direction to staff to make it a different.
To change it out and tweak it.
Yeah.
One question I had, and then I'm just going to ask the question and then I'm going to leave it alone, because I just want to check and see, are we still at some point planning to do a nexus study for water usage in our rates? And is that in motion? Because I know that, you know, we raised rates and, I mean, we started with the cash and lieu and now we're here, but I just feel like we still haven't gotten that done yet. And I know I talked to Director Arthur, he said it's, they're hiring somebody and it's going to be on that person's priority list and I just want to make sure that we don't lose track of that, because I feel like, especially with understanding what we have in our portfolio versus what we need versus long-term, it would be very helpful for us. I feel like that's the last piece of water education that I need, because I feel like, is it? Did I miss it? I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
I'm so sorry. I always.
There's a lot up there, it's okay.
There is, it's a lot.
We took action.
See, there's something for everyone.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I thought we did.
So we should have stopped me earlier.
Oh no.
Our, our amazing communication director was going to say something.
I think it's part of the update that we'll provide at a later point.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
That was my second thing, Mayor.
Okay, you're good. You're good. Now, I appreciate the conversations and I, what I'm happy to hear is that, you know, we're, this budget cycle, it's not, or these presentations, it's not just one, a one-time thing, you know, we're going to have a series of these presentations, in which case, in the, in the interim, we can look at our near and next priorities, we can look at what we, the existing plans and what we'd like to see and then, you know, roll out some more feedback as we get bits and pieces of the budget presented back to us. Right. I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, Council Walton. Okay, I think, you know, that should wrap up at least the discussion tonight. Just keep in mind, right, tonight is an introduction to the budget and so that doesn't mean this is your last opportunity to bring things up, but I would like to move forward to our next item, if that's okay with us at Council. Okay, does Council need a couple minutes of a break before we move on or do you want to dive into it? Our next, our next item. You good?
This is cloud through. People need to walk away, people walk away.
Okay, exactly. See, that's what I said.
Maybe we just need the cookie.
I feel like I'm inconsiderate. Okay, so, so as needed, yeah, Council as needed, feel free to pop out, do what you need to do and we will move right along to the final item for tonight's workshop, which is a the mental health and human services tax. Go ahead.
Oh wait, until you start talking.
No, no, no.
Well, I just don't fully understand an endowment with that, so.
Oh, okay.
Curious.
Yeah, we're going to get there.
We got lots of them.
All right, good evening, Council, thank you.
I wanted to kick it off.
Oh, you do want to kick it off.
That's right, yeah, just for fun.
I'm dying to talk.
I know, I know. It's like, okay, hold on, hold, hold on, I'm almost there. So thank you for hearing this item this evening. So a couple of things, the public very strongly supported enacting and passing this particular tax by over 70% within our community and we touched on this before, there's a clear need within the community and we're seeing that not only anecdotally, but also just by the demand in services, just for the co-responder program alone. It's a real touch point, which I think also is a touch point with this, in this particular area. Now, from a tax policy standpoint, this is a new tax and anytime you implement a new tax, it takes time to do that. It's, to contrast that, sales and use tax, that already exists, so that's coming in, we're watching it, we're monitoring it, it's something that's been coming in for years and years and years. We have economic models that we apply to it and so we, we know that. Same thing with like motor vehicle tax, it's an established tax and so we see that tax coming in, tax in, money in, money out. This is a new tax, so it takes time to ramp that up, so we, and that's what we're in the process of doing right now. So as Katie's going to, Deputy Doling is going to talk to you about, is the amount of revenue that's being generated by the tax, but also starting to put, or actually, actually not starting, but proposing the framework for how is this tax going to be implemented. So we have that in place in a bunch of other areas. This is new and so that's why it's, that's why we are where we are today, but just keep in the back of your mind that this, this is a new tax, it takes time to implement, it's not like something that's currently there that we just tap into and then away we go. And so this, there's, this is more of an involved conversation. So now, I'll ask Katie Doling to walk through the presentation with you and then we're happy to answer questions and have a conversation about this.
Thanks, and to tag on to the, kind of, this is a new tax, in addition, this tax is meant to go towards external agencies and with that requires us to be put in place of more diligent kind of reporting mechanisms, ensure that the taxpayer's money is going to what it is intended to go to, so that is part of, also while you see where our recommendation is going for this year and into next year. So before I dive into the specifics, I sort of want you all to keep in the back of your mind some of these policy discussions that we're going to be touching on regarding two very different, yet similar intentional funding sources. So the first that we're going to touch on are two programs that are existing within the city for the last decade or so and wanting to get Council feedback on how we wish to utilize these programs in 2022. And then we're going to shift gears to keep that in the back of your mind on, on our dedicated mental health and human services tax and specifically get Council's feedback on conducting needs assessments, which I will touch on later on in the presentation, as well as proposed sequencing for distributing this money within the community and within our nonprofit agencies. So shifting forward to our existing programs, we have two different ones, not to be confusing, but similar names. So the first one is a One Lafayette Endowment Fund. This was established by code in 2011 and while it's got a whole lot of primary goals, it's essentially to raise and disseminate funds for nonprofits. So again, very similar intent, it just happened 11 years before we, or 10 years before we passed our mental health and human services tax. This funding is held by the Community Foundation of Boulder County, so each year, by code, the city administrator is required to propose and propose budget, a dollar amount to be funded or given to this entity. Per code, once it reaches a certain threshold, and in this case it's $500,000, the city is then eligible to pull about 5% each year. And so the reason we're really touching on this right now is up until this past year, we hadn't hit the $500,000 mark and so therefore we weren't eligible to pull anything, to utilize it for programs within the One Lafayette Fund. So right now we have about 26,000 that we could pull from the endowment fund. We also, because we've hit this $500,000 threshold, we have not distributed the $25,000 budget that we approved. So again, keeping these numbers in the back of your mind for when we get to some sort of staff recommendation about potential limitation for this year. So we've got a good chunk of change within our endowment fund. And Council Barnes, would you like to now ask your question about the endowment fund?
Yes, I would, Deputy Doling, can you explain a little bit about what an endowment fund is and is it a tool for community foundation?
And I'm going to turn over to my esteemed colleague, Billingsley, who knows a lot more about endowment funds.
Yeah, so it is basically, well, in, in this case, it's a tool that was established almost 12 years ago now. And generally the rule, and I'm, I haven't confirmed this 100% yet, but if it were a, a private endowment fund, generally the rule is the IRS does require you to spin down at least, I think it's 4% per year, so you can't just accumulate funds from now until the end of time and you have to distribute them on a qualified thing. So, and, and by that, like I think your overhead can be a certain amount, but it can't be over that amount and, which there's, that can be challenged for some over time.
Yeah.
They've gotten in trouble with the IRS. And so in this particular case, this is a little bit of a gray area because it's not a, it's not a private endowment fund. So we're trying to confirm if we have to spin down that, that, like, I think it's 4% every year, but at some point I think we do need to start to use these funds for what it was intended for. It was sort of, sort of strange how we had written into the code that we needed to accumulate a certain amount before we would spend anything. That struck me as odd. I mean, I don't, I wasn't there when it was passed, so I don't know what the, the discussion was, but we're, we are now there, so we need to start to do something. Thank you.
Is there a minimum amount that has to be maintained in the fund?
It was in our, in our code, it said government.
I don't know if we have to maintain 500,000, but we cannot pull from it until we reach 500,000. So again, there's a little gray area that we still need to work through. And then this is also a combination of city contribution and there used to be, sort of when it was initiated, like community contributions too, so there was sort of a substantial fundraising effort that brought in probably no more than 25,000 of that 555,000, but there is a portion of that where there was much more intentional outreach to get the community to also donate to it for the dissemination to nonprofits, so.
And so this also has been called the One Lafayette Legacy Fund, if anybody's heard of it, heard of that, that's what this is.
So again, kind of keeping in the back of your mind, we could from this specific kind of program, utilize about $51,000 this year if Council chooses to. Now, shifting on to our One Lafayette Annual Disbursement Fund, this is what most councilors are familiar with, with our grant program. Again, it's been in practice for several decades. It was typically administered by the Human Resources Department with two council liaisons, who have had to be Council Sampson and Council Walton this year. Our annual contribution, again, in the code requires the city administrator to propose something in the recommended budget, Council doesn't have to adopt it, but typically what we have proposed each year and funded is about $45,000. It's broken into two different categories, essential community resources, these were typically three-year grant programs for about $3,000, again, funded things like legal services, mental health, kind of those nonprofits in that area, and then special project grants, which were much smaller, one-time funding sources for the high school or certain programs or projects. Again, the items that the program helps provide is a litany of programs and services that follow, again, with very similar lines of our new tax. So in the past couple of years since COVID, when I started really looking at this program, we haven't done the formal One Lafayette program. Instead, in 2020, I believe, we gave almost the entirety, we honored that two or three year contract that we had and we gave the rest to Sister Carmen. We did a similar approach last year, so now all of the agencies that were on a three-year contract have expired this year. So again, this is another $45,000 bucket that we have if we wish to utilize this year. All right, so there's that, keep that in the back of your mind. Let's shift now to entirely sort of different funding source, but why we're here tonight, which is the Mental Health and Human Services Tax. So again, passed last year, it's a 0.1 tax. In the Tabor language, we had put not to exceed 750,000 and the, the good news, bad news, but good news is we did that intentionally higher so that we wouldn't run into Tabor limitations. So based upon year-to-date collections, we anticipate collecting just about $600,000. Again, the intent is to distribute this outward facing, so there's no intention of doing overhead or, you know, admin programs or anything internally, it's to take all 600,000 of that and get that out into our community for nonprofits that serve Lafayette residents and a variety of safety net services. So earlier this year, City Administrator Sprague and I and Director Wilmot convened a group of, what would you say, six or seven nonprofit executives to talk about what works well for them when they go and seek funding sources from local governments, you know, a lot of different programs are out there and so what works well, what are barriers, what are hindrances? And we got some good feedback that we're incorporating into our proposal. The first one is really hitting on, we don't need to reinvent the wheel necessarily for both the application or the reporting process. There's this regional grant management system with the City of Boulder, City of Longmont and Boulder County through this fondant, which sounds like a nice cake icing.
I think it is, it's icing.
Yeah, management system. And the nonprofits, they've really worked with these three agencies to streamline the application so it all looks similar, so they're not all being asked a whole bunch of different things in the reporting and it's just very centralized. So that's one thing that they said, they would really appreciate instead of a whole separate process, timing, framework, all of that, to explore partnership with these existing agencies. They also really encouraged creating tiers of funding, so similar to the S E F D, where if you're in an agency over X size, you're eligible up to certain dollar amounts, kind of to, predictability for nonprofits is really key. Predictability and knowledge of anticipated income is really helpful when they try to go fundraisers, when they try to figure out what their next year programs are. So they encourage that approach. When looking at the committee that would make the disbursement recommendations to city council, they really want it to be diverse, so not only from various existing board members that could participate on it, like a member from H R C or L E A C, but also really looking at people that have lived experiences utilizing these services that could help with some of that selection criteria, obviously with city council being the final approval step, but having some people, not just staff looking at it, but really can speak to the services and programs. And then again, this gets back to the needs assessment that I had put on the first slide as far as a question. So they encourage the city to look at identifying primary outcomes of the implementation of this tax through a gap assessment. This is something included in your packet that the City of Longmont did, coincidentally through Root Policy, who is currently engaged in our economic and housing study, but they did this in 2020. And it's really a high-level assessment of different gaps, so as City Administrator Sprague said, with the co-responder program, I attended one of their trainings and even within Boulder County, the needs within the umbrella of critical safety net looks different. So even though we're all in Boulder County, each entity has varying needs. So we heard from the co-responders, like Erie is having really high suicide rates, so they're really trying to put efforts towards those things, whereas Lafayette doesn't have that as much. So this sort of needs assessment would really help us better understand where we want to put the funding, but also better understand, or help us justify when the community says, well, why did you give it to this and this? We could say, well, our needs assessment pointed to these particular services. So that was one of their recommendations. Yes, Mr. Barnes?
Change slides, can I ask a question now or later?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, so I understand the needs assessment for gap analysis and I'm seeing create tiers of funding for various sizes of organization, is that a value added, is that a weighted? I mean, size doesn't necessarily. I mean, size doesn't necessarily indicate value added. I, I think, I don't know, I'm not.
Mm-hmm. And my impression is more about, like, larger organizations have larger budgets, right? And so the money that they could use would go further based upon their size and their impact in the organization. Again, just a thought. I'm certainly no expert in this, which is what some of the challenges fit in this. We don't have staff experts. So we're trying to get as much information from others, um, before really putting forward what our staff recommendation would be.
Okay, so that's doesn't, that's not necessarily.
No, it's just feedback from the agencies that we met with.
And I'll, I'll add one point. So, um, what, what I've seen over the past is, um, generally those, uh, larger organizations that have like 10 staff, 15 staff, 20 staff, those, um, those groups are very good at, uh, uh, applying for funding. Whereas those groups that aren't as big and aren't as well capitalized, generally aren't as good. So you can't have like the small fish compete with like the big fish. And so you have to create different, different tiers so that you can sort of be more equitable.
Right.
I think.
Thank you. Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, so what, uh, staff is now proposing, this is our proposal, um, is sort of a tiered dispersment approach. Um, again, recognizing we're in kind of the tail end of the summer of 2022. Um, we really think that we could utilize our One Lafayette program and our council liaisons to distribute a budget almost of $100,000. Again, if you take the piecemeal from the endowment fund and then the One Lafayette Annual Grant Program, which is about double what we would typically do. And sort of use our existing processes, um, and do some outreach. We have gotten questions this year from various community members of when One Lafayette is going to open up. So we could do that as a, um, gap until we have a full year of sales tax collection and get some of these other systems in place for the true implementation of the HHS service. Um, in the meantime, we conduct a human services need survey, again, uh, what I had just touched on. If council is interested in pursuing the joint partnership, we would work through creating that IGA with Boulder County for the use of that application. Um, and then really work towards the finite details of the program, including eligibility. Again, that allocation approach of the tiered, um, developed requirements for a committee to assist with that funding recommendations and potentially start recruiting for that early next year while the needs assessment is being complete. And then in 2023, really, um, dive into using that coordinated application process. So a big piece of this is going to include outreach and education for interested agencies on what exactly our program is, where we're funding, who we're funding, what's the eligible amount, et cetera. Um, the coordinated application process, again, um, is the deadline for nonprofits to submit is in September of 2023. This allows for decisions to be made before the end of the fiscal year. That way agencies know what they're going into with the next year. Um, and then we would award our funding based upon a full year of 2022 collections. So one of the, um, things that is helpful about this, instead of giving nonprofits estimates of what they might get, they will know exactly. So we will always have a full year of collections, um, before we go into the next year's kind of process and assessment. Again, to that stability and knowledge piece of what nonprofits will receive. Um, and then next year, I think we really hone in on what One Lafayette and the Lafayette programs can be as potential alternative funding sources, either for similar services of what they're currently funding or completely different services. Uh, regardless, we know that it'll require some code updates because it's very specific in there, what it could be funding. But one idea that I had sort of had was, um, is this like seed funding for startup nonprofits? So they don't necessarily compete for the full tax money because they don't have a proven tax, or tax record, proven, uh, financial record, but there's a lot of startups that want to get into it. And so we do this for a couple of years. I, I had, there's plenty of ideas, but really, you know, honing in and talking about that, um, what it can be in the future, or even, you know, additional city programs to hope if somebody wants to do a pilot program in the police department to help out with human needs, like this could be it too. So plethora of opportunity, um, but we do kind of want to get councils, going back to my policy discussions, get councils feedback on, um, the approach for 2022 utilizing One Lafayette, um, program funds and our two council liaisons to sort of get that owned in for this year, make a recommendation so we can get some money out the door. But then, um, what does the full implementation of the human services tax look like? And are you interested in needs assessment? Are you, um, do you have questions or concerns about the proposed sequencing? So with that, I will open it up for questions and feedback, but I will go back to this.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for that. Go ahead, Mayor Proton.
So, yes, on all of it. I think, I think it's great that we sequence until 2023 for distribution. I think the needs assessment's great, um, because then we'll be able to validate where, where we need to spend our dollars. Um, and then the other thing I think that's great as well is I like the idea of the startups. I think that's really neat because especially as communities begin additional funding in the space, there is going to be more nonprofits that, that begin identifying those needs and working to fill them. So I think that would be great, a great mechanism too, for us to figure out if there's some kind of incubator that we can help nonprofits get off the ground in this space. Um, so there's that. One question is that I had in regards to the needs assessment. Is that then going to be taken out of the dollars we're collecting? Or is that a separate budget line item that we would then have to plan for? Like, some of the items that sustain the program, are we able to use funds from the, from the tax? Or do we have to use city dollars to then initiate that?
My understanding, and let's get legal, um, factual opinions, is that because this was so specific on distribution to nonprofit agencies, that it doesn't really include potential, um, overhead? And so we would need to absorb that through the general fund.
Okay. Is that something that we can use the One Lafayette funds for, potentially as the overhead portion?
You could.
Because that may be, I mean, especially if we have an overage in the endowment, that we could use that to begin seeding it. So, um, then it's with its original intent. And that's just something I'm, we're out there. Um, and then the last question I had was, I know that we have co-responders with our police department. If a co-responder, you know, for example, when I did my ride along, a co-responder was able to get somebody an Uber up to Boulder so they can go to a shelter. So those types of costs that we're utilizing or that the co-responder's dispersing, is that coming from their program? Or is this some, something that, that we can tie into this program where if they're helping some unhoused individual with some mental support needs, that then we can turn around and say, okay, well, there's this bank that we have that we can then fund an Uber to take them up to Boulder because that's where the closest services are for them to, you know, have those services. And I, I know that may be a little bit too detailed, but that's where mine and mine kind of went.
Yeah, I believe, again, to confirm without the expertise in the room, that our contract with Boulder County for the co-responder program includes those sort of ancillary costs as well. And that program is funded out of our public safety tax that was also passed last year. However, it is a good idea. I don't know if it'd meet the intent of distributing to nonprofit agencies. But again, another opportunity if One Lafayette, if it is not being paid for, it's coming out of their own pocket. I'm not entirely sure, but I do believe it's part of the overall contract.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have. Thank you so much. Great presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I'll do, I'll ask Councilor Sampson.
So first question, um, fondant, do you know if Boulder County is going to charge us? Usually they'll charge us for users or seats.
Yeah, when I had talked with them very, very initially, I think that is a potential. And I remember it being incredibly low, like $1,500 or like it is a fairly, you know, Boulder County, City of Boulder, the amount of money that they're putting in. Because I think it would sort of be based upon how much our program is, right? So 600,000 out of however many millions they're distributing. So, yes, I believe that was a consideration, and I was not at all alarmed by the cost of potential.
Okay, and then this is for the rest of council. I've been managing these type of programs for 14 years. And so, um, you can ask me some questions, and I'm going to tell you some realities of having gone through this. So, um, I, uh, originally, I will tell you, I'm not sure a needs assessment is going to get us anything more than what you see in Longmont. Up and down, um, the whole front range area, these sort of needs assessments have been the same over the last decade. I can tell you right off the top of my head, everything is basic needs with, um, an effort to go self-sufficiency. So you're going to hit housing, health and wellbeing, um, education, which includes mentoring and tutoring, which, by the way, that was the biggest group this year that we got coming in. Um, so you're going to go through those same things. I'm not sure the money is worth it. You're going to see the exact same thing that's in this Longmont one. So the other reason why is having worked with advisory boards, um, of residents who come in with all sorts of lived experience, when it comes down to actually evaluating the applications, all of that goes out the window. And they actually get into what's on the paper, what's on the application, or if there's an interview process. They really get into it. Um, so we may end up spending a lot of money and it may not actually be beneficial to us. We may already have what we need. Um, the other thing, I was originally really excited about tiers, but now if I'm thinking, you're suggesting 100,000 for the tier? Am I reading?
Oh, no, I, no. I have no suggestions on the tiers yet.
Because the hardest thing, the thing about tiers is the reason you would do it, if you look at it from SEFD, usually they had like seven, eight, and it's gotten bigger. Different organizations, Zoo, SEFD, I mean, um, DCPA, Cleo Parker Robinson, the Colorado Symphony. You have these groups that already are there, and what they want is they just take the entire pot and, and they'll divide it out. Um, however, this is interesting because what Devin was saying is you wouldn't want, you don't want that competition. Now, in my experience, sometimes it's the smaller agencies with this real passion that actually get the highest grant awards when you allow them all to compete together. So in, and what I have seen is there's a group out there this year that I was thoroughly amazed at, and I think they have two or three staff. And they came out with the highest grant award from this advisory group. Whereas there's a group in this community that has lots of staff, and they did not get any funding. So it's an interesting thing to look at. I, in some ways, um, I would hate for the tiers to limit those organizations that have real impactful programs, because that's really the issue. If you're going after basic needs, you know, basic needs, um, and self-sufficiency, there are some really, um, innovative and unique programs that come out of smaller organizations. There's also ones that come out of larger organizations and medium-sized ones. So what I would suggest is that we, we put the program, you know, or the grant application at the front versus the organization, and, and assuming that the organization.
I'm confused about what tiered means. Is, is Nicole describing what you're recommending as tiered dispersment approach? Or is tiered a different, tiered on this page, different than what she's just talking about?
Um, I don't necessarily have a recommendation either way. Uh, Councilor Sampson absolutely has way more experience in this than anyone right here. So I appreciate her perspective.
What's your use of the word tier?
Yeah, so the intent that, um, we had heard in looking at the SEFD model was that 70% of your funding goes to organizations that are a million-dollar, but don't quote any of this, but like a million-dollar budget or more, right? So anyone that applies that as a million dollars, they'll get 70% of the 600,000.
So that is what you're recommending here?
Again, not necessarily recommending, looking for feedback on council of whether that would be something you wish to explore, just because we heard from council, or from the representatives, that that was a beneficial thing. Because it also provides a little bit more stability. Again, they're, they're focused more, and they have a very unique lens of their own interests.
So she's describing, that's what you're suggesting? I was not connecting all of the dots. Okay.
And what I'm suggesting is we put the amount and the impact to Lafayette residents first.
Can I?
Yep.
Are you?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, so I'm, I think I'm hearing what I was wondering is if we were to do that, because we haven't done this, this will be the first time doing it. We, I feel like we would learn a lot because the needs assessment, if they are the same needs that have always been there, and we put the, uh, put the program out there and then get feedback. Because we don't know, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. And one of the people that I know who worked at Sister Carmen said, I said, what's the challenge? And she said, there are lots of services available, but it's very hard without creating even more layers to help individuals know how to get what they need. And they, the, the services exist, maybe not to the full extent, but it's hard. If you can't, if you don't have transportation or, you know, there's, there's one more barrier I have to know that, like you got something that's going on that's keeping you from getting to this or getting, making, uh, making you, making it so that you can access those resources, or there's not enough money to cover what you need at that time. I mean, I don't know that we really, um, I don't know that we really need to spend that much time figuring. I feel like we don't need to spend that much time figuring out what has to, where the needs are as much as getting this out there quickly and then getting some feedback on, um, from our residents and our, you know, stakeholders in this to say what worked and what didn't work. Because we're, we'll be able to do this again once the revenue comes in from the sales tax.
Yeah, giving the application process will in itself become a survey. Because you'll see what they say, because Sister Carmen says, hey, there's a gap. Then they should actually apply for that gap and fill it and ask for as much as they need unless, you know, that's my impression, is that you will find a lot of information out from the application itself and, and then get data after the fact, because then they'll come back with a report at the end of the year and say, this is how many people were served with transportation services or food services or whatever that is. They could serve a variety.
We were, but La, Leesap was having a discussion about performance-based standards as far as what we should look for in building codes versus, um, just a, a, a set prescribed way of applying, you know, new standards. But why don't we find out what, what actually works better? Um, and because we have such a diverse set of housing here, it seems like we have a, we have a diversity of needs and resources that aren't localized necessarily here. So it almost, it's almost like we need to get this out there quickly and find out if we hit them, if.
Get what out there quickly?
Uh, the capacity for people to apply for the funding to fill their. Application process. Okay, go, yeah, go ahead.
Um, could you go back two slides to tiered dispersment approach? So this is where I'm feeling confused. I'm, I'm seeing feedback from the conversation with nonprofits that a tiered approach could be beneficial. And so you're recommending that that maybe be, uh, implemented in 2022?
No, what I'm.
I'm confused of what tiered dispersment approach is your main title for this.
Oh, for this one, sorry. Uh, multi-year dispersment might have been a better, since we were using tiered in a different sense in a prior slide. I apologize, Councilor Walton.
Okay, so let me try to get a little organized. I have really specific questions, um, because I've been involved in the conversations we kept to this. So, um, so let me start broad. Um, love this idea, love the idea of moving forward quickly. Um, could you go back to?
Yep, yep.
Sorry. Um, moving quickly with doing, getting the money dispersed in 2022. There hasn't become a pandemic-level need that has risen to the top that would maybe override, um, getting back to One Lafayette. So I like the idea of doing that. Um, when you say creating an IGA, do you mean that that using, using that application process for 2022?
Yep.
Or just the physical, like, get the things in place to then 2023?
Yeah, get the, the infrastructure in place to get the bigger dollars out the door, but utilize the two, yourself and Councilor Sampson, for the One Lafayette Advisory Committee use a similar application process that's been done in the past.
So I'm thrilled that that has been what you've heard and, and are feeling like, because that really is like such a win-win with this money, because it. Because it benefits the nonprofits to just fill out one application for all the money. Because most of them are serving Boulder County. And then we can have specific Lafayette questions, I think, as part of the application process and our own eligibility, you know. So I think that all works. And then it helps us because I think that alleviates some of the staff and grant management piece of it as well. So I think that's really beneficial. So I'm really glad that that has, is part of this recommendation. I think, I like that we have waited a year to really do anything so that we have a year's worth of funding to then distribute the next year. And we're always sort of a year ahead so we know exactly how much we are able to give. So that, I think, has been a smart thing for us to not rush into anything. I agree with Counselor Sampson on the, on the needs assessment. I have seen multiple versions in my experience, both from working with flood recovery and for a nonprofit that gave away a lot of money. A couple of things. Through this, through the integrated application and the fact that our, the nonprofits serving Boulder County, those, I think those needs assessment and the kind of services that will, the agencies or nonprofits would apply for will, will present themselves through the application process. And I think that the, there's a real focus in philanthropic giving toward collaborative opportunities. And so by, by adding the money we have with the other pots of money in the county that are going essentially to potentially all or similar nonprofits, we can put restrictions or eligibility requirements on ours that says it has to go toward Lafayette residents or you have to be based in Lafayette or whatever we want for those kinds of things. And so that will start to show opportunities for gaps. The one thing that we, that I don't know if a needs assessment would be, or maybe just additional conversations, would be if the services aren't here in Lafayette, maybe there's something, and this could be in the eligibility and maybe it could, maybe the focus could change every year. But if it's seed money to then get services physically here. And that may come along with the facility in Boulder County. So I see this, I see something on the horizon that can really, that can evolve. But the, the real, I think the real guts of this, both for a 2022 One Lafayette program and a continued program in 2023 is in the application structure and the questions and eligibility piece of it. So I would say, I would, I would lean toward putting all the money toward what we have to grant rather than a needs assessment. And we, we use the, we use the resources of Boulder County and Longmont's needs assessments to identify and maybe, you know. Oh, the other thing I wanted to mention was I think that we should invest our grant capacity funds perhaps in some help to set these up. I feel very strongly that the One Lafayette program for 2022 should not just be a copy and paste of previous applications. That was one of the strongest reasons why we're even having this discussion and that we even did the ballot initiative is there really was an opportunity to reshape that program a little bit. And so, you know, I think we've had this conversation, Nicole and I, at the kitchen table and some caffeine probably would. We could knock it out, at least a draft would, you know, and then maybe hand it over.
We have existed.
And if we're crazy, some, yeah, outsource.
Yeah, yeah, so that's great with the grant capacity. We definitely have been talking about what that looks like. We have conducted sort of a cursory glance of what, where our gaps might be to administer like more of the federal pieces of grant applications. But I do have the application that the non, the fondant process has. It's very extensive, but if council would be open to it, I would love to work with Counselor Walton and Sampson to look at that, look at our One Lafayette and kind of see if there's somewhere to meet in the middle for it, just using their judgment expertise in these two areas to, again, not make it overly burdensome for this dollar amount, but make it a little bit more focused in. So we were clear on what expectations are.
Yeah, and I think if anybody else has any thoughts, like my three big things would be probably keeping it to one year. One-year funding, since we're going to roll out it something else in the future. That wasn't one of the three. But eligibility being serving Lafayette residents, having a Lafayette presence, and whether that's physical or office hours here, like maybe that we could kind of dig into that. But I think, I try to pull stuff here, so.
That's for One Lafayette?
Yeah.
We'll have to, like, look at that. Because there's some, there's some groups, like We Don't Waste, that actually collect food and then bring it to food banks and food pantries and stuff. So you never actually see them, but they.
They won't be nice, or?
No, I mean, you, if I were to go to the food pantry, I wouldn't see We Don't Waste. But they put out 225,000 surveys, servings per each county. So you, you don't see that there are foods coming in, but they've got milk and meat and all of this that goes directly to the food bank. And you talk to the people at the food banks in the area.
So it's like an outsourcer.
Yeah, it's like the sourcing, yes. It's this out, so we'll have to look at some of those things.
I'm gonna, is it okay if I jump in? I don't want to interrupt because it sounds. One of the pieces, and I'm gonna look at them because.
By all means.
I gotta see if they, how this sits. Part of challenges working with different groups is that they don't know how to talk to one another. And it's not, and it's not always because of the language. Sometimes it's jargon that's used in your industry. Sometimes it's because the population you work with is not what they're working with. So they have a different approach. Their models work differently. And in order to do interdisciplinary, not interdisciplinary, yes, to collaborate with groups that don't necessarily always work with one another, the fact that, what are they called? No, waste.
Oh, real waste?
No waste. The fact that they, we don't even, I've never heard of that. But I've heard of others that do that kind of thing. One of the bits of feedback I'd like to see is collecting and understanding of where there are channels that don't connect. If you've got, because I'm guessing that Sister Carmen communicates with lots of different organizations, but the one I can't remember. You know, maybe they don't communicate with them frequently and maybe they would if they knew what, you know, when do they want communication, what form do they want it in, what's their value to you communicating with them? And then same back, because that might close some of the gaps if we find out these two agencies are working out of the same building, but they never collaborate. And it could reduce the overhead that they have paying the electricity bills or whatnot. And taking it back to RAC, you know, and be curious if RAC knows about this group. Because there's a big question about food waste, you know. If they knew of that and how they did this distribution, because that's amazing, 225.
225,000.
Thousand, not a day.
No, servings over the county, usually over a year.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, that's just stunning. And that would build our database so we could communicate more effectively. Because we were, Counselor Wong and I found that we were serving a lot of residents of Superior before the fire impact. And Sister Carmen was doing that, we didn't know. But Sister Carmen said, by the way, you know, we're helping out residents of Superior as well. So it's just like, I'd just like to find out.
So you want to know, something we tried this year, and this is something council can do. We did a public presentation of everyone that received an award. And something that I heard when walking out of that presentation was the nonprofit saying, I didn't know about this. I now heard about them and I've heard what they do, just a little snippet. And now I'm able to talk to them and reach out. So that and putting stuff on the website. Here are award winners, what did they receive it for? You know, that kind of thing. I think it helps. Just sharing.
That's all.
That's a great idea.
Any, any other thoughts?
I would say for myself, it's, I've heard a lot of good feedback from council. And I'm sure you all have collected some of that as well, right? As, you know, most, it looks like there's not really much of a need for a need survey. For me personally, I'd like to see, as sort of Counselor Walton touched on a little bit, is like, you know, the One Lafayette grant program, that was, we saw that as almost like a drop in the bucket for each one of those. I would like to see something more robust, something more sustainable long-term, something that can connect the community members with resources. That's, it's not necessarily just going to one nonprofit at a time, but what's something where we can create a process where members of the community have access to an ongoing resource? And this is the kind of investment behind it. I don't want to get into the specifics right now of what I'm talking about. But I think that overall, 2022, I think you have, you know, I think I would like that to look, I am fine with what you have here in your recommendation or whatever you want to call it. And then 2023 is really where I'd like to see something more terminal now, right, for our residents. But we'll talk more as we get closer to that. I'd also like to see the involvement when we do, when the application is released, when we do have the organization, we get to those, the nuts and bolts on that, how that's distributed. I'd like to see a very diverse population of being a part of that program and the acceptance of those grants. I'd like to see some young people a part of that as well as, you know, as you mentioned earlier, not just boards and commissions, but other people that would be directly impacted by these funds in those conversations.
You mean on the advisory committee?
On the, on the committee, yeah, the dissection committee. Anyways, okay, so do you feel like you have input?
Yes, that's super helpful. I really appreciate that. Again, I have no sway one way or the other about the need survey. I just know it's been done, so I wanted to put it out there. So we will definitely utilize those funds and get with Counselor Sampson and Counselor Walton here in short order so that we can come up with a timeline and some outreach regarding this dispersment of $100,000 and then start working away at these other pieces for, yeah, that bigger conversation of what the big money distribution looks like.
Right, yeah, you have a really good team. I feel like this is the dream team right here. So I trust, I trust them, I do, I do. I trust them to give good feedback and to create something that's really beneficial for our community.
Well, thank you. This was very helpful conversation.
Sounds good, everyone. Appreciate your time tonight. And we will, I guarantee in the workshop, don't forget about our meeting when we come today. Let me know if you can't make it.
Is there going to be a packet put out, sent out?
Yep, this Thursday at the latest, again, some more time.
We'll be in a tomorrow, the format, maybe in another.
Okay.
...